Good evening, everyone. This is the Groton Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, January 29, 2018. We'll begin with announcements and reviewing the agenda, followed by a public comment period at 7:05 where you can ask the board questions and have up to three minutes at the microphone. Followed by our Town Managers' Report where we will discuss our agenda schedule, notification by the Town Manager of an absence and an appointment of Mike Bouchard as acting Town Manager, and then consider ratifying the Town Manager's appointment of Remy Coletta to the Great Ponds Advisory Committee, an update from the Town Manager on the operational audit recommendations to consider ratifying the Town Accountant's contract from July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2021, update from the Town Manager on the Prescott School negotiations, and an update on the proposed FY '19 operating budget issues. At 7:15-
That agenda item is canceled, Mr. Chairman.
Well, since it's on the agenda, at 7:15 we had a request from the Natural Market to install 30-minute parking zone on Main Street. That has been withdrawn for the moment, followed by an annual report of the Personnel Board. At 7:45, an update to the Selectmen's annual goals and consider adopting a goal relative to the Prescott School. Under other business, a discussion to consider, we've processed to change the name of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Groton to the Select Board of the Town of Groton. An update on the recreational marijuana forums, issues and next steps, followed by Selectmen Liaison Reports and minutes of a subcommittee to set the Town Manager's goals on January 8th, of January 8th, and a joint meeting with the Finance Committee on the Budget from January 8th. Isn't that subcommittee meeting to set your goals? That wasn't on January 8th, was it?
That was.
Okay, well-
Absolutely was.
I stand corrected. So, we have announcements from anybody on the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move one item out of order on my Town Managers' Report. I want to move the update on the Prescott School negotiations first, if that's okay?
That will be fine. Any other announcements from anyone on the board? Off-the-board announcements?
Personnel board's in session.
Thank you for calling yourselves to order. And for those of you who don't know, this coming Sunday evening, the New England Patriots are in the Super Bowl, and everyone should enjoy that game. So, go Pats.
You're going to expect anybody at work on Monday.[173.56][173.56](Laughter)
You know-
Right.
You're not going to be the Town Manager in that time, so you can't say that.
Oh, that's true. That's right. I won't be. Tell Mike Bouchard to close town hall.
No. No.
I'm already voting no.
At any rate, moving right along, we have a public comment period. Does anyone have any questions or comments for our board? Seeing none, we move to our Town Managers' Report.
Well, just let me get one quick thing out of the way. The Great Ponds Advisory Committee has asked me to appoint Remy Coletta to the Committee. We went through the Selectmen's policy in which the Great Ponds Advisory Committee could re-advertise that vacancy for a while. The Great Ponds Advisory Committee interviewed, recommended to me. I've made that appointment. I'm asking the Board of Selectmen to ratify that appointment tonight.
And they supported unanimously?
I'm going to assume they did.
Okay, great. Do you have any more vacancies besides that one?
There's one more. One more.
So, if anybody else is interested in our great water resources and ponds here in this town, please contact either the Board of Selectmen through the Town Manager's office or the Great Ponds Advisory Committee, and we'll see if we can get you on there. Becky?
So, I will certainly vote for this. However, in preparing for this meeting, I went looking, as you know, I had written a proposed policy on hiring, selecting people to serve on committees, and then learned that there was already one in existence. And what I actually learned today when I went through a frustrating process looking at our records on the town website is that we have more than one, and some of them are a little bit in competition with each other. So, I will be doing some work with Mark or IT to sort of figure out how to bring our policies a little bit clearer and just a little easier to find because I think that's important for members of the town. If it was difficult for me, then it's difficult for everybody.
Fair enough. So, we have a recommendation to affirm the Town Manager's appointment. Anyone would like to offer a motion?
I'll make that motion, that we appoint-
Ratify the appointment.
Ratify the appointment of-
Remy Coletta.
Remy Coletta. You moved it off the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got excited. Until the next slide.
That's why I grabbed the paper.
For term to expire when?
June 30.
Term to the Great Ponds Advisory Committee, term to expire June 30, 2018.
Correct. Motion's are made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, roll call.
Well, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. With Selectmen Petropolis being on the phone, all votes have to be done by a roll-call vote.
Pine, aye.
Peas, aye.
Manudian, aye.
Petropolis, aye.
Deegan, aye. Now it is unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last month, I'm going to jump ahead to item number six of my Town Managers' Report. Last month, Selectmen Peas requested that I provide the board with an update on the negotiations with the Friends of Prescott to lease the building. The negotiations have been on hold. An issue that, an issue arose that was related to the reuse that impacted on negotiations. The Friends have been marketing and seeking tenants for the building as part of their developing their business plan, and I think the response has been very encouraging from what I've heard. However, based on this, it's been called to our attention that the proposed mixed use may trigger some building code compliance issues that will require a change to their business plan, and it could affect the way we negotiate that lease. So, I know Bob, Attorney Collins, has represented the Friends. He's been working with Ed Cataldo over the last month, I'd say, Bob?
I'd say longer than that, actually.
Yeah. I have a memo. Ed couldn't be here tonight, but Ed did send me an email this afternoon.
Chief, may I have a copy of that?
Yeah, take mine. Yep. Oh, I'm sorry, Bud. So, Ed's been working with Bob, so we're here tonight to hopefully come to some sort of understanding of what can and can't be done in the building, and then I, hopefully, Jack, Bud, Jack and I can continue on with the negotiations with the Friends. So, I'll turn it over to Attorney Collins.
Well, what I did, and I'll share with the board tomorrow through you, the two letters that I think are pertinent that I sent Ed. One was today, just commemorating stuff that we added to my little list. But last week, I had sent Ed a letter dated January 24th, which I forget if I faxed to you guys, but I'll get it to you tomorrow.
I don't remember getting it.
No.
Yeah, so I'll get it to you tomorrow. But over the course of our conversations, what I attempted to do was to clarify that the uses that the Friends would like to commit the building to would fit within the confines of the Dover Amendment. The Dover Amendment is the educational and religious exemption that is written into the Zoning Enabling Act that indicates what a municipality may regulate and may not regulate. It was pertinent in this particular case because the building was built as a school and has been used as a school for 90 years. And most of the uses that the, that would have been discussed recently actually fit within the confines of what are allowed as educational uses. That's pertinent under zoning. The other thing that is pertinent is the fact that this is a historic structure, and under the building code, there is a specific, not exemption, but a separate treatment for how historic structures are dealt with under the building code. So, being mindful of these things, I came up with essentially a list of what I felt was allowable in this building, which I went over with Ed today, but it's in my letter of January 24th. And that would be utilizing the classrooms on the first floor for continuing education classes, for artist instructional studio spaces, as exhibition spaces for things, the two things that jumped into my mind are the Holocaust penny exhibition that's at the middle school that we all walked past at meeting. There was also talk about the Book of Peace, which would, it would be nice if it could find a home. Offices to support those uses, and then the ability to utilize the gymnasium for those uses for meetings, as a meeting space, for educational or cultural events that contribute to educational, cultural awareness of the community, and potentially also as additional municipal meeting space. In addition to that, offices could be committed, as they are now, for municipal office space. Right now, it seems to me the Commissioner of Trust Funds maintains their offices there. The basement level, we agreed, could also be utilized similarly, so long as it is separated from the first floor internally until such time as there's an elevator. So, by essentially locking the staircase off and making certain that the entrances on the basement level are ADA compliant, which I believe they are, the basement could actually be committed to different uses that fit within these parameters also. So, those are the things that we agreed with that could occur here. We also had a couple of caveats, and that was that the gymnasium floor, the structural members were never actually able to be physically inspected by anybody at all, the different analyses that have been done over the last several years, because I think there's a ceiling downstairs. And Ed felt that prior to utilizing the gymnasium for any recreational uses, you'd want to actually have it inspected to make certain, first of all, that it has structural integrity, but second of all, that it actually was built to support, you know, a bunch of kids bouncing around. I know that that happened over the years, but on the other hand, the building is now 90, and it would be a good thing to be cautious about that. He also felt that we needed to make it clear that there need to be bathrooms on both the first floor and the basement level that are ADA compliant. I believe they are, but that would need to be inspected by the Accessibility Commission. We also both agreed that there should be a site plan review done, which is a modified site plan review analogous to what I do all the time for Groton School, and I've done it for Lawrence Academy as well. In this instance, where nothing is being built, it would be an administrative review, but to ensure that the parking spaces, the walkways, and the entrances meet the requirements of ADA compliance.
That administrative review is done by the Building Commissioner-
Building Commissioner and the Land use director. Yeah, and I can get together with them and go through that. So, that's what we came up with for the first floor and the basement level, which some people call the first and then the second floor. The upstairs, which I call the second floor, currently is being used, it seems to me, by the district. At some point in the future, if that wants to be committed to a different use, there actually would need to be an elevator installed in the building. So, I thought it was a worthwhile thing at this particular moment to confine our conversations on what is possible at this time, and that's what I commemorated in this letter.
So, what would you propose to do with the second floor after it's vacated by the district in the very foreseeable near future?
It could either be committed to, I suppose, offices analogous to what it is committed to now, so, you know, district offices, or if they don't want it, I suppose, potentially, it could be a municipal office, but I, in my opinion, it would need to be, the second floor would need to be accessible at that point, so there would need to be an elevator. Which, you know, and if I can, I'm going to indulge in something that I never do, because I'm here all the time on behalf of people, and I never really tell people what I think. And I do want to tell you, as a taxpayer-
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I just want to, just want to add, as a taxpayer, though, and as somebody that's been involved in real estate issues for a little more than four decades, real estate's hard to come by, and we own that, all of us own that building. And I had the privilege of serving on the committee that oversaw the renovation of this building when it was ready to fall down 20 years ago. And I remember, when we reopened this building, as lovely as it is, and it has stayed very nice, I remember being very mindful of the fact that it was obsolete then, and we are bursting at the seams for meeting space. Thank God, the Electric Light Department opened its new facility. I've already been at several municipal meetings, not Electric Light Department meetings, that were able to occur in that building. That building up the street is something that can serve this town's needs often in the future, and it's a wonderful thing that we happen to own it. It's right here, and it has a presence. It also has a very nice presence that is part of the character of Main Street. So, from my vantage point as a taxpayer, I'm really thrilled that we have a group that is willing to kind of make certain it survives as a municipal asset until such time that we, as a municipality, actually might need it again. So, I think it's a wonderful thing, and we already own it. We're really good at going out and buying more stuff, and this thing we already own. So, as a taxpayer, I have to tell you that. But, so at some point, somebody's going to have to spend some money, no question about that. Might be Friends, it might be something that finds its way on the warrant. But I think you actually have a blueprint now for this group to be able to negotiate rationally with the board and come up with a lease that actually gives that building a continued life, and, you know, does provide some additional viability to the center. So, one last thing I got to tell you. I don't know if any of you have had any experience with the Roden Bush Center in Westford, which had a very similar history. It was a nice, obsolete school building that the town happened to have in the center, and it actually was a little older than Prescott. And about 20 years ago, they started doing just what this group has been doing with that building, having some continuing Ed classes there, but I actually went to a painting class there, and it really was very successful. So successful, as a matter of fact, that now, about two decades on, they actually are doing a full renovation to bring it up to code. So, stuff like this can serve a really good purpose. So, I'm happy that I've been able to help in having a script that you guys can now work with to cut a deal, essentially, to give this light, this building, a continued life. So, that's my spiel. I'll shut up.
It was nice to hear you share your personal perspective on something.
I never do, yeah.
I've been working with you for about 20 years on boards. Other than on the Charter Review Committee, I don't think I've ever-
Yeah, I never expressed my own opinion, yeah, so I'm glad, thank you for indulging me, though.
Barry has a question?
So, I'm a little confused as to the application of the Dover Amendment because this is a municipality-owned building. So, if I were to hear you, what you said was, municipality is not allowed to regulate its own building?
No.
If there's educational, if someone intends to do educational or-
Religious.
Religious things there. So, that, for me, what I recall about the Dover Amendment, and we've had some, I've had some experience with it because of certain things happening in town, is that if another organization is going to, is a religious or an educational institution-
Yeah.
There are certain bylaws and planning board regulations that are limited in application. There's only certain things you can do, and there are only certain things you can regulate, and effectively, there's a lot of things they can do because they are covered by the Dover Amendment.
And that's true.
And so, I guess I start to, when you blur that line between who owns the building and who can declare a Dover Amendment sanctity, if you will, if the municipality owns it, how do we not therefore regulate our own building, and it becomes outside the Dover Amendment clause because it's us regulating ourselves?
Well, the one thing I'd say, and it can be very confusing, and it took me a long time to grasp, this one salient point, is ownership has nothing to do with use. And so, the fact that the town happens to own the building actually is not pertinent under zoning, nor actually under the building code. So, a use that is exempt under the Dover Amendment is exempt, and again, it's not fully exempt, it's a partial exemption. It's exempt regardless of who owns it, so it actually doesn't matter if it's a private institution, public, semi-public, can be profit, can be, I think, there are instances, I suppose, where it could be for-profit, but I haven't seen a case on that in this state. But it, it actually is no different.
Okay, so, however, the difference would be that a municipality or a private owner could restrict, could not enter a lease because they recognize that they would be, they'd be subject to Dover Amendment rules, and they could choose not to be because they don't want to be forbidden from regulating their own building or regulating activities within their building.
Well-
So, you have the option of not entering into a lease with somebody. They can't say, "Well, you have to enter a lease with me because I'm a religious institution." You can't do that.
Oh, no, and they can't do that, yeah.
So, you understand what I'm saying? There's, there is a point, yes, you're right.
Yeah.
I agree with you. Once you have a tenant, and that tenant has acknowledged and previously explained that we are an educational institution or an educational philosophy or whatever, I agree with you that they are now the tenant, and there are certain rules and regs that, because they're an educational or religious, no longer, no longer can be applied to them, or they're allowed to be exempted from, if you will, rather than be applied to. But you still have the ability and option as a landlord or an owner to decide, "I choose not to enter into that agreement because I do not wish to be in a situation where the Dover Amendment is going to force me to not pay, not, I'm not saying to force me to, where the Dover Amendment allows me to look the other way at building code issues that might otherwise have to be addressed."
Yeah, but actually, that's not the case. So, the two are very separate.
Okay.
So, the only reason why the Dover, and I'm sorry I'm taking so much time, Mac, although Barry asked the question, so it's his fault.
I agree.
The only reason I brought up the Dover Amendment in this whole conversation with Ed was to make it clear that these are uses that building's always been committed to, and what they want to do are consistent with those uses. They happen to be Dover Amendment uses, which is convenient from a zoning vantage point.
Sure, but not a building code.
But it has nothing to do with the building code.
Correct.
So, it gives you nothing under the building code.
Okay.
So, under the building code, the one thing that is interesting, that does give the town a little bit of something and a little bit of leeway, and the building inspector a little bit of leeway, is the fact that it's a historic structure.
Okay.
So, historic structures allow the, there is an, it's really not an exemption, but a, there's a section in the building code that stipulates that in the case of historic structures, different rules apply, and the building inspector, building commissioner, has the ability to consider compliance alternatives. There are still an awful lot of rules and regulations that would need to be complied with, and at the end of the day, they need to be concerned about public safety.
Right, right.
But, but they are kind of separate.
All right, so I'd love to, and I know you probably, maybe you're great at excerpting regs and-
Oh, I'll give you a copy of that.
That's in that. I'm one of those weird people that likes to decipher those things and understand the-
I'll give you, I have a copy of that section.
So, before I could make any decisions, I'd love to read that and understand the nuances between the historical, the educational, such as religious, and how it all aligns into to make this building effective, so that we, so I understand it from-
I'll include that with the copies of my letter that I bring in tomorrow. Happy to do that.
Josh?
I apologize. I got lost in this intellectual discussion a long time ago, so I think, Bob, I'll put the issue to rest. Thanks.
Becky or Allison?
I'm happy to hear that you have had a successful conversation, and this allows us to move ahead, I assume, Mark?
I'm going to immediately talk to Jack and Bud and schedule another meeting with the Friends to move the negotiations forward.
Allison, anything?
No, I don't know enough about, you know, the Dover Amendment and that kind of thing, so I'll wait for the research that Barry made for you.
Well, I mean, the research is great, but certainly Ed Cataldo laid out a path in his email today at 1:30 that would allow for negotiations of a lease to occur, obviously with certain stipulations of any additional uses, but it certainly seems to clear the way for the Friends to continue along and to release with the town.
Right.
It does, yeah.
We're looking forward to doing that as soon as possible.
I'm looking forward to signing it.
Mary, I'll email you back and forth and pick a couple of dates for us to get together and work with Jack and Bud.
Right.
Becky?
Before we complete our discussion on this particular item on the agenda, I want to jump ahead because we have the other item on the agenda about whether or not something about Prescott should be in our goals this year.
Yep, yep.
And I apologize for the fact that this was on the agenda because I asked for it to be on the agenda before Christmas, and then I was out of town last week. I should have called and said to pull this off for tonight's meeting.
Okay, I can reschedule.
And I, and I don't think we're in a position really to make a decision about what a goal should look like or whether it should be there, so I don't want these people to leave and then us be again talking about Prescott later when really my intention was to say, at least from my standpoint, I don't want to discuss it tonight.
Barry, reschedule it.
Jack beeped, I'm sorry. I'll defer.
Jack?
A couple things. So, someone, you said, brought this to our attention. Do we need to now make sure that this individual is satisfied with this so that we can put this to bed? My concern is that there's been sort of a never-ending series of objections that have caused this, us to be unable to resolve and move forward with Prescott, and I want to, I want to put a nail in this coffin. So, how do we assure that we've entertained the last of the objections that are going to come forward? And the second thing is, relative to this history of objection after objection, I want to apologize, at least for myself as a Selectman, a representative of this town, to the Friends of Prescott for what they've had to go through to get to this point. It should never have been this hard to do something as good as what you're trying to do. I thank you for your efforts, and as an individual Selectman, apologize to you for what you've been put through.
Are you going to address that, or can I?
You can address that, please.
Certainly, I agree with you that this has been a drawn-out situation, but it was a very close vote when it went to town meeting whether or not it was going to be sold to a private entity. It kept in the control of the town, and when the Friends of the Prescott came in and wanted to move forward with their proposal to reuse this building, certainly, there's going to be people in the public that have objections because it was a very close vote. The objection was duly noted, it was brought to the attention of the Building Commissioner, Attorney Collins sat down and met with him, and we have a clear path that's been approved by the Building Commissioner that would allow the Selectmen to enter into a lease. So, if that individual has an objection, then we have done our due diligence in working with the Building Commissioner in order to work to create this lease. When this lease is discussed in public and before the Selectmen consider ratification of it, whoever that individual is and anybody else who may have objection would have the ability to come to this meeting and voice it.
Could I add a little bit to that?
You may.
Well, I mean, you made it sound like there was a close vote, and then, you know, the next step was that we had the Friends of Prescott coming to us.
Right.
And that really left out several years' worth of work. First, there was a committee that was formed and given a charge to figure out what to do, since the town had voted to keep the building and not to sell the building, to be correct. That committee came up with a, I'm biased, I was on that committee, I think it was an extremely well-thought-out plan. The Board of Selectmen at that time, which did not include me, accepted that plan and issued, based on the recommendations of that committee, an RFP that took, you know, another six or eight months, and there was one response to the RFP, a very well-constructed response- six or eight months, and there was one response to the RFP, a very well-constructed response. It was evaluated and seen as being extremely satisfactory, above the highest level of satisfaction in response to the RFP, and it was awarded. And so we've had several years, it was not, excuse me, it was not awarded because there was a change in the leasing of whether the technicalities of whether we could lease the school district and the Friends of Prescott at the same time. We worked that out, and we've been moving forward, except that we've been stalled for quite a while. So I also regret, and I thank the Friends of Prescott for all their work, and I hope they will still hang on, and I hope that at this point, we can move forward on the plan that has been out there for a long time, that we have hoped will come to fruition.
Becky, I'm sorry I left that out, I was trying to be concise, but certainly, anybody who's followed this knows the history of what transpired, and I was not trying to be dismissive of any of that. So now that we know that history all over again, here we are. Barry?
So as we move forward into a lease situation, and I won't speak for anybody else but myself, it's my hope that said lease would describe or help us understand how the items that Bob mentioned in his report, and Ed also mentioned in his, are going to be addressed, for example, sealing off between the basement and the first floor, you know, taking care of access to the second floor when the school moves out, all those things, I mean, those are all contingencies or, you know, things that have to be in place before they can be used, and in a legal agreement, they should be addressed.
That's right.
ADA compliance, you know, that we, there's going to be an inspection, blah, 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 just, that's what I would hope to expect to see from said lease, before I could be satisfied that we covered what you said and what Ed says, and that we're protecting everybody's interests here, the Friends' interests as well as the building commissioner's interests.
Barry, I would think it would make sense that after Jack and Bud and Mark work on a lease, and before it's presented to the Friends of the Prescott to get their opinion on that, that it should be run by the building commissioner to see if it is inclusive of all of the conditions that he's placing.
Well, I'll tell you, as, having worked with Bud and Mark on this in the past, what we've tended to do is to say that we will comply with all relevant zoning regulations, and that, or that the leasees shall comply with all relevant zoning regulations, and it puts their responsibility on them, and if inspection turns something up, it's a violation, then that's a problem for them. But I've never seen leases say that we're going to install a two-and-a-half-inch, or whatever, firewall between X and Y, and that we're going to make handicap ramps that will be six feet wide and have a pitch of X. This is, instead, it simply references a set of regulations that need to be complied with.
Certainly...
Anyway, that's our responsibility, is to bring a lease that makes sense. Again, I don't see building inspectors looking at leases to determine whether a lease is valid or not. I think building inspectors provide a set of regulations, and we reference the regulations in a lease.
So here's a situation where I give you a pathway forward that would get my signature on something and let me approve this, and you resist that recommendation and refuse to do it. Why is that a good idea?
I don't recall refusing to do it.
It's exactly what you did in your comment by, "This is all I want to do, and this is all I'm going to do, and I don't see the need to do exactly what Barry and Josh have recommended."
Okay, Barry, we should do this someplace else, not here.
Where else am I gonna do this? Why don't, I tell you what, Jack, why don't you recommend another executive session that's not allowed?
No, I mean, it's a little thing.
Okay, let's not go down that road.
Can I, can I, can I make a suggestion, can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
You, by all means, please do.
I would like to suggest that we've understood the issues, and that I'm ready to move forward with Jack and Bud and the Friends on the lease, and I would like to schedule that as soon as possible.
Are you folks good with that?
I would love to.
Yeah, I think what we are, and I think, you know, Josh, when you were part of the bargaining team, and now you can't be because, oh, whatever. And it's not about you, Josh.
I can't be because of the open meeting.
Because of the open meeting.
Right.
That, that we wanted to, we reset the negotiations to be in the spirit of cooperation, and I think Friends wants to cooperate, we're trying to do that, we've asked attorney to represent us and to talk to the, we have not been resistant to the building inspector or to the town. We have sat for three months waiting for this, and have, and now we're revising a business plan based on that. But we also have always said we want to take guidance and support from the town. You have an oversight committee that we're very anxious to start talking to, perhaps as part of the negotiations, they can even look over the shoulders of the town and us. But I would like it to be cooperative, not like, "We're going to have a lease, and we're going to give it to Friends, and it better have that," which isn't what you were saying, Barry. We, I think we should work together to think of what has to be essential in that lease.
Let's see if we can get it done soon, sooner than later.
Partners, yeah.
Partners.
No, can I just say one last thing on that subject, even though it's irrelevant to a certain extent?
So why bring it up, Jeff? Seriously, why bring it up? It's irrelevant.
You just make a, Jack can't bury both.
Bob, 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 please.
They're both right.
Piece is already set.
Good, good.
Let's move on.
Thank you. Before you go, Connie, Allison, have something else?
I just want to request that the entire Board of Selectmen be kept up to date.
I will do that.
Is this regressed forward as well, that I would hate to see, you know, things go far, far down the line and then come back to us and count there be some sort of other issue.
That's my job, and I will do it, Allison. Thank you.
And I'll get you guys a full set of the letters that I referenced, and the regs.
Appreciate it.
And the case of my letters, save it for a night when you can't sleep, it'll shore up your cure for insomnia.
And we encourage you to sign up for courses at Prescott, okay?
Mr., yes, thank you, Mary. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite the Personnel Board.
Thank you.
One second, Connie Sartini had a question.
Kevin Brogan.
Kevin Brogan has a question.
Kevin Brogan, I have a weird technical question, all because I walked by the Prescott School the other night, and I saw a sign up front that said, "The Inn," I think, is there offices there temporarily?
The building commissioner allowed that use on a temporary basis?
That's, that was my question.
They got a special permit before my involvement, I would point it out.
All right, so I think we all look forward to the conclusion of these negotiations, and let's hope you're successful in creating a lease. Thank you for your work on this.
Oh, my pleasure, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the Personnel Board is here, along with the HR Director, and I asked them to come up to give their annual report to the Board of Selectmen.
Kevin, I forgot you were on the Personnel Board now. I've seen you on so many things lately.
I assume you have...
Mary, long time no see.
This is awesome. All right.
I assume you have the annual report in your, somehow in your...
No.
No?
No.
I didn't see it.
I forget to give it to...
Yeah, it's never, it's not there.
No, no, no. Jack, you have it? Obviously, you don't.
I do not.
Yeah, Jack, look. Oh, I never got it, I'm sorry. I never got it up to the camera for you, Jack.
I talked to you about it.
Actually, it'll be up on the board.
Sorry, it's...
No, I don't, I don't have it. I apologize.
It won't be. It's very, it's very...
You didn't give it to me, right? It's always true to sleep.
Jack, I'm gonna take a picture and text it to you. Yeah, he needs it. All right, Jack?
Uh, don't bother, thank you, though.
Don't bother? Okay.
You don't care? Okay.
I don't anticipate being able to read a picture of an eight-and-a-half by eleven page on my cell phone.
Fair enough, Jack.
So, before we start, I just want to go through, maybe people all know the people up here sitting across from you, but some of the people down at home, I've got Mary Jennings, you know, was ex-superintendent at Grant House Regional High School, lots of human resources experience in that job. Kevin Brogan is a career human resource executive, many years in this background, and of course, myself was CFO of a half a billion dollar company, all HR worldwide reported to me for 15 years, so between the three of us, I would say we probably have more experience than many towns have in HR. Of course, Melissa has been an HR person as well, from town of Bay area over here, so many, many years of experience in this area, just so the town knows that HR has much, much experience. And also, as you know, the Personnel Board, the Charter, has, the Personnel Board is in an advisory role to the Board of Selectmen, and to the Town Manager, and to the Human Resources Director to help them in managing human resources in town and block. And so when you look at what we did the last year, we were asked to do a few things. The first thing we did was we participated in search, we participated in the Land Use Director's search, and we also, in that process, supported the internal promotion of the current Assistant Assessor to the Principal Assessor, and the title obviously changed in the current Charter when it's adopted, but those were the two... No, no, you also helped with the Conservation Administrator's search. That's true, we did. That's true. Another one was on there, I missed it, yeah. Yeah? Yeah, that's right, we did. Yes, we did. Yeah, I was on it, that's right. See, more than I thought we did.
It's always good to undersell.
Undersell, yeah, for the next time. I was gonna add that the next year, but it's a next year. We also conducted a salary survey for the Fire Chief, which was a very interesting survey, because he was where he was paid, and we had to do a very large step to move him up to the midpoint of his range, with a lot of hard work from Melissa, using the same 14 towns we used in the salary survey for the Town Manager, for the Police Chief, and for the Fire Chief. The other things we did, we participated in municipal government survey, we reviewed the external municipal salary survey, which Mary Jennings had suggested we do, with the Town Manager and Human Resources Director, we did that actually in our last meeting. Welcomed, obviously, Kevin Brogan to the Board, Dolores resigned at the expiration of her term. We discussed the consolidation position of the Town Clerk and the Assessor's Office when we were looking at jobs descriptions and how we put those two together, and we just recently supported the reclassification of the IT Desktop Specialist based on what his current job is. As you recall, we had three people in that group, and now we have two, and he's absorbed different responsibilities, and therefore, we agreed with Mark and Mike and Melissa that his job should be moved up a step or two. So that's what we did with, we also believe there are probably other things we could do, but we haven't been asked to do, and that's one of the things that selectmen should obviously think about, is when you're looking at policies and procedures and raises and other things, there is a lot of talent on the Personnel Board that should be used, and like I said, we do get involved in certain things, and they're pretty specific, but there are other areas that you ought to think about when they come up, and that's why we're in advisory role. That's it. Well, we also, if I can add just one other thing, we also reviewed the Town Accountant's contract with you guys at the last meeting, just to let you know what we were planning on doing, because that's for the Board of Selectmen tonight. You didn't take any position on it, but I just, I'll give you the information with you. Yeah, we, I don't know what the contract says, we were advised of increased percent, that's percentage, that's what we're advised of. Yep.
Certainly, your value in terms of your work experience and years of collective knowledge has really paid dividends, and then it was ago when we considered no longer having a Personnel Board, that would not have served this town well, and I think that your presence, all of you, and Dolores, prior to you, Kevin, has been a great resource to both this Board, HR, and the Town Manager, so, thank you, folks. Becky?
So you mentioned salary surveys, you used the same 14 towns for Police Chief, Fire Chief, Town Manager, is that the same 14, or is that the same towns that the Matrix people used?
No. The Matrix, there was an overlap in the Matrix, I believe, of five of the eight, or four of the eight, something like that. There was, there was, there was an overlap. But again, the difference, I believe, is that when we were looking at the Town Manager, the Police Chief, and the Fire Chief, those positions are very high-paid positions, and you draw talent from, you could draw talent from far away, as evidenced by the drive that our Town Manager makes every day, because those positions are those kind of positions. The Matrix was more looking at people in the whole spectrum of wages, which is a lot of people that aren't in that high area, and those kind of people, those people who work in those jobs are drawn in from a much closer proximity, so that's why they had towns that were not exactly the same. Some were like little things that close, but more, they were more with, how far does somebody drive to work, as an example, in the Highway Department? They don't drive from where Mark, you know, they just don't.
Right.
So that's why it was a different mix.
Okay, so I noticed in the library's response to the Matrix recommendations, they actually said, they added four other towns that they thought were more worthwhile for comparison with us, and so, you know, I think it is an important factor, you don't just pick random towns to compare yourself to, and just, I was just curious about...
The other, the 14 towns we used were based on pretty specific metrics.
Uh-huh.
There was the size of town, budgets, number of people, that kind, you know, sort of like span of control and the budget size. The people, the three that we did review, they also came in with their select towns of four or six, so it was our 14, Police Chief, Town Manager came with four or six of their towns, and, you know, so they were somewhat different. And we looked at those as well as the 14, and we, from that, we came up with what we thought was a proper salary range.
Didn't we just recently ask you for a salary survey range?
For collective bargaining purposes, information.
Right, but do we know that we used...
You need to be very careful in discussing that right now.
Let's executive session discussion.
Yes, please.
Okay, so what else should we be asking you to do? You said, you said there are other things.
Well, there are things when, when policies are looked at, salary policies, hiring policies, those kind of things.
Benefits.
Benefit policies. I still, all the Personnel Board, I'm remiss, I have direction from the Board to work with the Personnel Board on the hiring policy. That's one right there. Process, I have not got to it yet, I apologize, but I will get to it, I will work with Personnel Board.
Although, we did get one Personnel Board's members' input on that process when the situation was happening.
Getting to you, Jack, we haven't forgotten, but...
And to get to what Becky had asked, though, if you think about three years ago, there were a lot of policies that we did get involved with Melissa, I don't know how many policies went through. Many, many policies were updated at that time, and when the Personnel Board was first reformed, and that's all we did, it seemed like, was going through policies, so not that we haven't done a lot of those, we have, but as other ones want to be changed, I think you mentioned, you know, they just, you just need to think, should the person, and we don't want to get involved in our policies, but if they have anything to do with pencil personnel, then they should be thought of.
I think originally, we also said that we would be willing to work with the Town Manager or the Board looking at contracts, union contracts, like, some of us, all three of us have worked with unions, I know, I've worked with five or six, and not only the contracts themselves and the benefits, but some of the other language in them, the timing of when you negotiate them and so on, you might ask us if you, if you get to that point to ask our opinion on that.
Fair enough. Anything, oh, Jack, sorry.
I was just gonna go back to the comparable towns discussion with regard to salaries and Matrix. So Matrix didn't use comparable towns for salaries, Matrix used comparable towns, a comparable town list for operations. We did have two different types of salary comparable towns, one was comparable towns for executive-level salaries, and that was a much broader set of towns that were based on a variety of inputs, like income and budget, et cetera, and a bigger capture area, because as Bud points out, you may attract people from, you know, as far away as where Mark comes from. But for more of our line staff, we tended to stick to closer towns, towns that were within very reasonable driving distances of ours, because that's the employment market for that labor salary. We don't have to discuss that, because that survey is still involved in some executive session stuff. So it's important to keep in mind that there were three different comparable groups, depending on the use, two uses for salary, one executive level or management level, and one line level, and then another comparable group for operational comparisons, and that's the Matrix one. And there's overlap in all of them, but they were each specialized to their purpose.
That's a very valid point, Jack, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. Before we move on, Allison, anything? Members of the public, well, thank you for your work this past year, and we look forward to working with you this year.
Have a safe, uh...
Thank you for your help.
Safe trip, enjoy yourself.
Bud, go Pats, do your...
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, back to my Town Manager's report.
Yes, sir.
I respectfully request permission from the Board to take some sick leave from January 30th until February 5th, I'll be out of the office for five days. I've appointed Mike Bouchard as the acting Town Manager, and I've given you the official notifications required by the Charter. I'd ask the Board to approve that request.
So if you didn't want us to approve that request, you wouldn't have asked, so you're sure you want that?
I really have no choice.
All right, and this will just be for a one-week period, if anybody's wondering.
Do we need to vote?
No, we certainly do need to vote.
You need to accept my leave, the appointment, I make the appointment, and it's not subject to anything.
Oh, we don't have to ratify?
You don't have to ratify that, nope.
We don't have to vote to accept sick leave, do we?
But I'm gonna be gone for five days.
Because it's a town manager.
There's something in the charter, I believe, that says when the town manager will be absent for four or five or X amount of days, he will appoint a temporary acting town manager.
So what is it that, I'm just asking, what is it we have to vote on?
I want you to approve my sick leave request. I'm asking you to do that.
Because it's in the charter, I think we should.
Okay. I move that we approve the town manager's sick leave request from January 30th through February 5th.
Further discussion. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Peas aye.
We're doing aye.
Jack? Jack?
Tropolis, aye.
Deen, aye. That is unanimous, good luck with your procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And we look forward to seeing you next week.
Hopefully, I'll, hopefully I'll come back.
Why did you skip number one?
He took it out of order.
You already did it.
No. Number one, the...
Oh!
Yes, it was requested that it be withdrawn at this time.
Yeah, she, she was, the petitioner was ill, couldn't be here tonight.
Oh.
I apologize.
We'll put it back on.
But it'll be, we'll reschedule it to a future meeting. I'm sorry, Becky, I should have been more clear about that. The board established a goal in 2018 to implement the recommendations of the operational audit. So, to reach that goal, I asked all the impacted departments to review the recommendations and provide their feedback. I asked them to look at both the operational recommendations and the best practice recommendations. And then what I did is I took all of that information from the department heads, and I put together a memo, I guess you'd call it, or a document, that lists the recommendation, the department head's response, and then my recommendation based on that response. And basically, I thought that would be a useful tool for the board to determine what you want to proceed with and do in more detail, and what you want to accept as far as, or not accept a recommendation and leave things as is. So you have, go ahead, Josh.
I was gonna say, before you go on, all the recommendations that they had listed here.
Yep.
Every one of them.
Yes. Department heads in an exhaustive search. Now, there was some best practice where they just made a comment and it wasn't really a recommendation, so I didn't get into those details. But every recommendation within the audit itself is listed here, and then best practice recommendations were also listed. And I think the department heads did a really nice job going through it, commenting on it, and providing feedback. Now, this is a 22-page document, so it's pretty extensive, and I don't expect us to go through it tonight. So, I really...
Why?
But you want to go through every, do you want to go through everyone tonight?
Yes.
I think we've discussed this for a long time.
Okay.
And we paid to have an audit done.
Okay.
We had a committee to study that, and I think it's time to discuss this.
You want to do it next Monday with Mike Bouchard as town manager?
Next Monday.
More than happy to have you do that next week. I don't think you're meeting it.
There's no meeting next week.
I know.
Well, I guess, I guess, Josh, just, I guess what I was gonna, oh, Josh.
Jack, yes, sir. Jack?
So, I think with the, the operational audit committee spent a lot of time on actually how to operationalize this. And my recollection is that we had a sort of a collective understanding that we'd like to see each recommendation as a row in a matrix. And, and in that way, it could be done on one page, and that you could have some backup, but you'd be able to manage this off of a one-page matrix and show each recommendation, and then show whether that recommendation was agreed to be, to be adopted by the department head, and then a plan, a date for it to happen, and then we can come back during our quarterly reviews and review that. Or whether the recommendation was disagreed with by the department head, and then we could have that department head come in, or have maybe a department head per week come in, and talk about their plans for their section of the matrix. I agree with Mark that what I see and read here is virtually impossible to use as a management document. It was very thorough, and I was unable to find any recommendation in audit that was not addressed in this multi-page document here. But for purposes of managing this going forward, I suggest that we list each as a row in a matrix, with a column for adopt, yes or no, if no, explain, if yes, provide a date, and then quarterly revisit that document against the planned date.
So then, what I would, I think, Jack, that's a great idea moving forward, but I still think that reviewing these recommendations and then establishing that spreadsheet with those recommendations, and then formally voting on them at a meeting after this would make sense.
Okay, but I think that the purpose, if we are to do that, I think that it really involves dialogue between the department head and us. Otherwise, you might as well just read this and put it down, because there's really no opportunity for dialogue. If we have any objections to what's said here, we're really only talking to Mark about the objection.
Understood. So what we can do is, you've got to realize that Mark is in charge of the employees in the town, and that Mark works under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen. And we charged Mark with going to the department heads in order to get their responses. I understand what you're saying, Jack, and I think I defer to my fellow board members in terms of if they'd like to proceed along those lines or not.
I'll just say that the biggest fear of the committee was that these recommendations would become part of a document that would go in a corner and die. That was the biggest fear. And the idea of having this as an ongoing tool that comes to a full resolution, avails itself of evaluation over a period of time and is fully resolved at some one time, is really the vision.
We made this one of our goals and subject to quarterly reviews. So we would be ignoring our own goals, and I don't want this to go stale, I think any more than anyone in this room wants it to go stale.
I think, I think, Josh, I kind of, I put this together because I wanted you to see what all the department heads are saying, I think it's a very useful tool. I think I kind of agree with what Jack is saying, that maybe I schedule one department head over the next several months, each department head to come into a meeting, and then view...
Months?
Well, next several weeks meetings.
One a week.
Whatever, and then have them come in at each of the next meetings. Like, for example, at the February 12th meeting, Tom Delaney will come in, and we'll go through Tom Delaney's recommendations, and he talks to the board about, here were the nine or 10 recommendations that the highway department were made for the DPW. Here's Tom's response, here's what we're gonna do and have the board adopt that. Then the next week, bring in Donnie, then bring in Patricia, and so on.
I can't see why you couldn't do this over the course of two minutes.
Oh, it's enormous, Josh. Any one of these topics could take 15 minutes to discuss, any one of these recommendations.
I don't disagree with you, Jack, but here we are, sitting here...
A hundred.
Here we are, sitting here, going into budget season for FY19, with town meeting coming up in April. And if you were to have one a week between now and then, you wouldn't finish before town meeting.
How many depart, one department a week? It would take, I don't know, what is it, nine, nine departments?
Yep.
Two months.
And you made this your year goal. I just think, Kevin...
I'll defer to whatever you guys want.
I just think, Kevin, you have the information. You know, some of these will be, some of these will breeze by, maybe we could do two a night, Josh.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we could do the accountant and the, you know, we're not gonna bring in the town clerk, because I had no recommendations for the town clerk's office. They said maintain staffing, the town clerk is happy with that.
Does it make sense for us to go through this tonight and then determine which departments we need to bring in?
That's all I'm saying, who do we want to meet with?
I put this together because I wanted the board to know that we're working on your goal.
Well, I, in my opinion, it makes sense for us to spend a little bit of time tonight, because we, I thought we were gonna discuss it, I went through and read it, and I've got some questions.
Me too.
I'd be happy to answer, let's do it.
Here we go, town clerk.
Okay, town clerk, the recommendation is to maintain the current staffing level.
Wait, why don't we, why don't we, so doing it literatively, why don't we say, if someone knows they have questions, why don't they raise those questions, rather than having to go through things that people may not have questions about?
Because there are, there's the group of 11,000 other citizens aggro that might want to hear this.
So, yes, who will be, who will be in the efforts of public transparency, we will be, as we've already, I felt like we've already agreed that we will be calling department heads on, at one or two a night, depending on the situation, forward, to discuss those in a broader view. Honestly, if we dump all this on 11,000 citizens tonight without having this document in front of them, they're gonna get lost, because it's too much information to consume. So, for transparency, I agree with the idea of having one or two a night. However, there may be certain things that to head, to head off, things that might happen in those meetings, that we can maybe address tonight. I know I've only got two items that I just wanted to clarify on and make a suggestion about prior to that, prior to one of them, and...
I have three.
So, we may be able to get through with six things, seven things.
Barry, follow along those lines. Don, make sure this gets posted, this memo gets posted on the website, so that people can see it.
I think that's a great idea.
We'll put it on, we'll put it on the town manager's page.
Yeah.
For anybody interested to see it, we'll also make a note on the homepage that says, go to the town manager's page for the department head's review of the audit recommendations.
Can you be sure to provide a consolidated one-page matrix that has all these? Because I, I just promise you that people are not gonna go into...
I won't have that done tomorrow.
We know.
Tuesday, though.
No, 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 it'll take some time.
I will do that.
He will get it done for us, Jack.
Thank you.
All right, so then, Becky?
Rather than, I mean, you can read them off and just say, if anybody has a comment, read the name, and then we'll get through this.
Want me to do that?
Section by section, yeah, read a section, if anybody have any questions.
Does anybody have any question on the town clerk section?
No.
Okay. Does anybody have any question on the finance section?
No.
I just think it would be beneficial to understand a little bit more about the software pros and cons that they're talking about.
Yeah, that, that, I want to have that discussion, I look forward to having that discussion with the accountant and the treasurer and the assessor. Having a munis, it's called, munis is the number one, is the Cadillac of the state. Having that munis software come in, we've got quotes on that, you're talking between $300,000 and $500,000 to do it. And while we would all love to have it, it has a human resources component, it has an accountant's component, treasurer, collector, payroll, assessor, everything. With all the priorities we have coming up right now, I don't see that as something that I would recommend you spend money on, because it is a major capital investment.
And, and...
And with the schools and the city center, huh?
It's also time and people, I apologize for interrupting, it's not just capital, it's, you know, implementation project of an IT of that level is a huge undertaking and involves every single person in town hall.
I'll just say that I know the schools went through it a few years ago, and munis was one of the ones under consideration. I don't believe it was the one finally suggested, so it might be worth seeing whether the system that the school uses has compatibility with a municipal package of some sort.
Okay. But I look forward to having that discussion with Mike and Patricia and Jonathan, and we will definitely schedule that. Country club?
Whoa.
Oh, did I miss something? What I skipped?
Let's see, you missed assessor?
That's part of finance.
That's part of finance.
That's all finance.
That's all finance.
I have a thing that I would like you to look at.
Yeah, tell me.
Recently, ADP payroll services completely went online with their payroll. And what used to be a call-in, and I know you used to use hoppers, and then I know it came in manually, and I know that different departments have different criteria, especially DPW can be somewhat confusing, police overtime can be somewhat confusing. But this software, I had never used, I had never implemented or inputted payroll ever. This is idiot-proof, okay? Once, well, nothing's idiot-proof, but this is about as idiot-proof.
But if you can use it, it might...
I can use it, it's idiot-proof. But never having used it and going on and understanding it, it might be worth looking at it again, because it could make a lot more efficiencies for the office, as well as free up time that could be used for other things. I'm not suggesting cutting back on staff.
No, 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 we went out to bid, Patricia helped me, three years ago, on payroll.
I agree, because it might have been...
Was it three years ago?
Things have changed.
Okay, so it's gotten better?
Well, there's been a lot of consolidation in the payroll processing industry in the past two years.
Night and day, take a look at it again.
Big competition.
They couldn't handle the coding before.
Yeah, big competition's changed.
If they can handle the coding, and you could free up 10 hours or eight hours or something for something else to be done, I'm sure you'd be able to use that time.
Okay.
That's all.
Anything else in finance?
No, sir.
Country club?
Where we had him in here just this weekend, talked about that, so hopefully we're okay.
Yeah, he did, he did a really nice job Saturday.
Allison has a question.
I just have a question about this, I think that I'm the liaison to the country club, so I don't know whether it's more appropriate for me to have conversations with Mark or Sean directly. I think that we need to understand the long-term needs of the country club to kind of stay with the, the current level of service, if you will, and then if we really wanted to kind of step it up a notch, what that would cost and what that would yield us in general.
I would also add on the country club, it's not recommended, I don't know if it falls under this, but he and you have said that you're counting on more revenue from the camp. I was actually looking at camp offerings in the area, because I have potentially grandchildren who may be spending time with us this summer. And I would say that the, the camp brochure needs some more information on it.
Okay. We can pass that along. Human resources? IT?
Yes.
Yes, Becky?
Well, there's discussion here about having a list of projects, and it sounds like people, they didn't really like that idea, but I believe we have a goal that had something to do with IT, being able to communicate with townspeople and get information out. So, I wasn't sure, I mean, if that should maybe show up here someplace.
Well, it is, it is a goal that the, that the selectmen have, and I'm hoping to have the IT director in here late February to roll it out. He's really close, and I think the board's gonna be really impressed with what he's been working on. Did he make it back for me? I'm really hoping that we are able to bring that in. I know we'll be able to bring that in late February, early March, and I think he'd be really impressed with what he's been working on. So, I don't know if he needs to be in here, Becky, it is a goal of the selectmen, it's actually one of my goals as well that the selectmen gave me, so we'll be bringing something into you in the near future.
Okay. Maybe it should show up in here that there, you know, there are certain projects that are being planned.
Yep. Jack, after, Allison?
So I just wanted to say, I think up higher, there was something about the budget, it appears to be in several different places on the website, not place...
Yes, that's in the, in the accounts message.
And to me, that's more of an IT thing, where the budget, where the date should be in one place with links, I mean, it should be linked everywhere under the sun, but...
I think that's probably my project to initiate, once we finally have an actual final voted budget, get that somewhere so that everyone can recognize that it's a final voted budget, and then whenever there's a change to it, if there's line item transfers, or another voted, if the fall town meeting, then get another one out there. Because right now, there's just too many different versions. I think I would tend to agree, the budget's out there lots of different times, lots of different places, many documents, but what's the final budget, if that's what people are looking for?
Or even what is the most up-to-date budget today?
Yep.
It isn't final, but what are we working on today?
Well, absolutely, the most, the most up-to-date budget for...
The most relevant.
Final for FY17, the most up-to-date for FY18.
Exactly.
The proposed for FY18. I can work with IT here.
Okay. Anything else on IT?
Jack has some.
Jack, Tropolis.
Yes, so, on IT, I'm not, you know, this is the kind of thing I would expect to do with our IT director in the room. But the second recommendation, which is to have a formalized prioritization list or effectively a roadmap, is just based common practice in, in most organizations. And, you know, the, the selectmen's goal, the transition to the town manager's goal of having a signup list for notifications, is a perfect example of that, of something that we've, that's been a top priority. It, we talk about it every year, and then it disappears until someone talks about it again. But we don't regularly review a priority list, and therefore it falls off the list and only gets back on the list or gets attention when someone complains about it. Having a, an adopted, formalized list that's created between the IT director and the town manager, as suggested here, but then reviewed in public, so that the Board of Selectmen can know about it, can answer to the Ellen Backsendales of the world when they ask us, you know, where is my project and where is, where should I expect it to happen? Would make us an organization that has clear visibility right through our departmental levels as to what our top priorities are. So I'm fully in favor of this particular recommendation, and I think that our current practice is rather invisible, and, and we should really adopt the recommendation of matrix.
Could we bring him in in February, maybe?
Yeah, why don't we bring him in first? He'll be the first one in, Jack.
Well, probably not the first one, I want to, when he comes in, I want to...
He'll be in in February, Jack.
February, early March.
Okay, and your point is taken.
Agreed.
And we certainly made that one of the goals of the town manager, and I think we made that one of the goals of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, and, and just for the record, on two, under information technology, I'm completely in agreement with Jack, as well as, and I appreciate the IT director being willing to work with town managers to find a roadmap. I think it's valuable, and I think it actually permeates all of the other discussions and all these other departments that are revolving around IT, and can help understand what can be done to offset some of these pain points that might be happening, so we don't need a full-blown system. You know, ADP, well, that's kind of an IDP, IT project also, right? So, I think, I think it's, I think it's a challenging thing, because it involves, it really does involve reaching out to every other part of the org to say, what do we need to do? But that's why the roadmap is so crucial, though, because it does attach so many other people.
Bless you.
Very good.
Lynn Juice?
Yes.
Yes, Becky?
There's discussion in here about permitting and about getting information out to people, and everyone seems to be quite satisfied about that. My experience, when we were in the process of discussing a building permit with Indian Hill, I went looking on our website to see what, what it says about getting a building permit. And I couldn't find anything, and in order to find, what I did find was an online application, but you could not see what was required or asked for in the application without actually going through...
but you could not see what was required or asked for in the application without actually going through the process of saying, I have something that I want a building permit for. And I, I don't find that a satisfactory situation. So maybe I missed it. I, I'm perfectly capable of not being able to find something that is there. But I think we need very clear guidance about filing a building permit, how you do it, what is going to be asked of you, how much you're going to have to pay, how you, how it gets figured out. All of that ought to be visible, even to people who are not asking for a building permit, so that they can find these things out.
Allison?
I have kind of similar comments in here. I, I think that it's, to me, one of these things where it's, it's very clear to those who deal with this every day. But then when kind of the movie, we had a similar experience, went on there and it was like daunting.
Okay.
I think that there are a lot of recommendations, to me, that lead back to the idea that perhaps some of our regulations need to be reviewed for, for clarity or simplification. And that's obviously a huge undertaking that would take, that would touch lots of different places and people, but I think it would be great if we can understand what that process might look like. Like our, our bylaws and things are not clear. I mean, even, you know, I know from the zoning board sitting in hours upon hours of meetings debating internally, what does this mean, what does that mean?
Having just applied for a building permit online a week and a half ago, two weeks ago. First experience using the software.
What'd you think?
Stinks.
Really?
Okay, does it work? Yes, okay. It completely works, okay? There's no question about it.
You just applied lying to the end.
It, it's just, you fill in your information, you have questions, there's no like little button that you click on that asks what you do in this box, et cetera. So I did use it, it made sense. I paid for my permit online. It clearly states that it's 1.2% of the cost of the project within, within the area. But it's a little cumbersome, to be honest with you. Do I like that you can do it all online?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, okay? So I think it needs some tweaking and I think that, you know, from reading what's in here as well, running reports and things, it could be better, so.
I look forward to the conversation with Takashi when he comes in.
Yeah, absolutely, but I think that.
I'm glad you were able to use it.
I was able to use it and, you know, it, it worked and I was, I was more than happy to be able to do that.
That's important.
So the one thing that I saw in here that jumped out is the signed by law. And Mark, you know, you and I serve on the sign committee.
Yep.
Along with Carolyn Perkins. And I think that we need to sit down and review the regulations on signage.
Where is that here?
This is under, if you carefully look right here where it starts, with design guidelines for signs.
Which number?
Oh, number one, in the land use director response.
Oh, design guidelines, including guidelines for signs.
Oh, I got you.
Design guidelines.
Okay, so I'm going in there. I think we completely need to review the sign by law, chapter 196 of the Town of Groton, Town Code. It's been a number of years. I think we should look at it. I think we should run it by the planning board for comment as well. There's been some issues about lighted signs in town, about.
Religious symbols?
Yes, Jack, thank you.
Yeah.
It's, it's great that you can read my mind. Religious symbols being displayed around town and complaints being generated about these things. And I don't know what we can do to regulate these things, but we certainly should put it on for discussion. So Mark, can you see that, and since that's you and me?
Yep.
As well as Carolyn, just schedule that. Because typically the sign committee does not meet unless we have an application before us, but it's worth doing a review.
So I just want to reiterate on the building permits. In the old days, you got a packet, maybe several pages of paper, you could flip through and see what you were going to be asked to, what information you were going to be asked. I think that capability needs to be in the online system also, before you start it.
Here's what's required in order to obtain a building permit.
So, you know, they're on building permit online 1.0 and they need a 1.2 and 1.3, and this is good. This is good feedback that they should get to, to improve that process, absolutely.
I think for a home renovation, that's a minor renovation, it's completely adequate. But when somebody was to build a large addition or to build, you know, a Groton Inn or an Indian Hill thing, I don't think the software's equipped for that, okay? That's all I'm saying, that it, it's good for a small project. That's all.
All right.
Fair enough?
Yep, perfect. This has been very helpful. Police department?
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, I'm not there.
Nothing on police?
Well, I think the police recommendation and the discussions surrounding their recommendations very much ties itself to the proposed addition of the four officers and the communications. And I think that we really need to tie this to that. Bud, you're looking at me.
I just.
Where am I going with this?
I just, yeah, that's right. I just read the first paragraph of that and I just heard what you just said. I was just trying to.
Yeah.
Just trying to connect it to, that's all.
What I think is this, we need to assess that, what is proposed against what is recommended, that's all. And use these recommendations in the course of the finance committee and selectman discussions relative to the proposal that's on the table. That's all.
So you're saying that the rec, like, so the recommendation is that at the current levels, we're plus availability per diem, we're in really good shape. And you're saying we're proposing additional staff? So you're saying use, use these as an argument with regard to the, the request for additional staff?
We need to be able to compare the recommendations from Matrix to the request that's being brought forward by the chief.
I think that, I think that's backwards. I think that these recommendations should be addressed by the chief. So the chief would not address the first recommendation with a request for additional staff. Okay, and, and so, and I, I didn't, I, I actually, and nor would he, I don't think, uh, address the second recommendation with a request for additional staff. He might. I think these are two separate issues, Josh, a request for additional staff and these individual recommendations.
Well, I find that there's a correlation between the two. And I, and I think it's worthy of discussion. Thoughts, fellow board members, besides Jack and myself?
I mean, I, I agree. I think we'll clearly be having several conversations in coming weeks with the police chief, whether it's triggered by this or whether it's triggered by potentially an override, it's, it's all going to kind of come out in a conversation, so.
Okay. Barry, Becky?
I, I think we've seen other instances where the Matrix report, because it started at a certain, it started at a certain, to, to finite, finite time, and time moves forward and the town moves forward. For example, there were things that were done after the report was written that had been, that were in process while the report was written, but they didn't have that data because they took a snapshot of a certain particular, you know, moment. And they had no idea what transpired between that moment and today. That we might, we're going to find some discrepancies between what's, what transpired over those months. And that might be where we, we, we say, we use our knowledge and our analytical ability to, to say, at that point in time, this is 100% accurate, however, this, this and this has happened to perhaps modify or negate this recommendation that may not be applicable to Groton's today or Groton's future. And that's the frame of lens that we as intelligent consumers would analyze some of these recommendations and decide yea or nay against them.
Well, to put it a little more concisely, that's nothing more than saying, here's the recommendation, and the answer is, yeah, we understand that, we're already halfway there because we were, already started doing this. We'll, we'll be complete in a month. That's all it is. To, to conflate this plus the bud, the budget rec, uh, rec, uh, requests from the police, I think is a, is to miss the point of this, of the objective of this agenda item. The objective of this agenda item is to say, a professional organization came in at the following recommendations. Where do we stand on these recommendations? To start bringing in budget requests for additional sergeants where there's no recommendation for an additional sergeant or for an additional dispatcher or for an additional SRO, it, it just blows the Matrix, uh, the, 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 the understanding of the, of Matrix recommendations out of the water, and it just shifts the focus. They're two separate issues.
I, I, I would encourage us to move forward through this because this could be something that bothers us down for a long time.
Yeah, well, then I, what I would say then, if that's the case, well, you wanted to bring IT in very much near first. I'd like to bring the police chief in right away. Because if we cannot get responses to our questions specific to Matrix recommendations, and I see them in writing here, okay, and I see your comments in writing here, Mark. But I think we have to have a one-on-one on each one of these recommendations, get an answer on there before we could even move on to consideration of the request for additional staffing.
Exactly.
Okay, I get it, Jack, but that's why I said at the beginning how I see these things relate to one another. I guess I just didn't explain it well enough.
So I'll schedule Donnie for February 12th.
Yes, sir. Fair enough, Jack?
Yeah, they're good with me.
Okay.
Public library?
I think we should keep the library.
I would, I just found it strange that they suddenly had a very different format.
Only because they gave me such a detailed memo on the entire report, that's why I did them this way. I, I gave you their memo. I didn't know how else to do it. Because they didn't really answer the specific.
Right.
Recommendations, they gave me a memo, and so I gave you their memo.
Yeah.
And they're an elected board and that's their prerogative.
Absolutely.
They don't report to me.
They don't report, yeah, they don't report to selectmen either.
So I'm, I, I'm sorry this wasn't done differently.
Um, so does that mean that, do you want to see the library come in so we can address this, or no?
No, I personally think it would be good to understand the library is beloved and, and from the Matrix assessment is, is well-funded. I think it would be good to understand if in coming budget cycles, we need to contemplate changes there to understand what reductions might mean or what they would look like, but.
Okay. Now, we're good with the library? It, it certainly should be on the, on the spreadsheet that Jack referred to, Mark.
Yep, I'll, I'll, I'll do my best on that.
I do want to note this, if I could, that I think the library has suggested that there are other communities to which they should be compared. And I think, I, I just caution, and when I look at them, they include Duckbury, Lynnfield, Northborough and Wayland. These communities need to be compared to us in a, in a variety of ways, in, in, including in what people demand. What, and you measure that in terms sometimes of income level, but also in terms of available budget. You know, what, having people who have an income level and demand a certain level of service who live in a town with 100 people can't, just can't get, no matter what they want. Just can't get the level of service that same income, same type of people live in if they live in a town of 100,000 people. So we have to be very careful about holding ourselves up to, up towns that have different capacities than we have when we do comparisons. So while I think it's useful to make comparisons to other towns, we should be very careful in, in terms of the value that we, that we give to those, to those, those comparisons.
Fair enough. Public works.
So, oh, go ahead, Becky.
No, you go first because I'm not clear what we're.
So I had, I only had two minor situations. I'd, I'd encourage us to recognize what, I don't, I don't necessarily know that Matrix explained what they meant by asset management program. The way I interpret it is different from the response that, that Tommy put forward, and it's a little more involved. I don't think it's just about buying it, you know, when it, when it's dead. I think it's more about, you know, how often it's maintained and stuff like that. I'm not necessarily have a problem with any of that, I just, I just, I think it's something that we might want to flesh out a little bit is, you know, we, we know that we, we maintain them on a monthly basis and we know that, so we can, we can bypass this recommendation if you do want to disregard it because you're already doing the things. Because to me, an asset management program is much more than buy, replace. And then the other item I had was number 14. I completely concur that the DPW, this is involving reflective lights. And I completely concur that DPW shouldn't do this. However, is it possible for another department to assist with this, one that's regularly routinely out with lights at night? Shining lights on things, perhaps the, there could be some coordination between the PD and the DPW to, to check the reflectivity of these signs?
It's a meter, it's a meter though, you have to have a specific.
Oh, so it's not something they can just, uh, it's a light meter to reflect, oh god, that's such a, okay, but never mind. It's just, it's just a weird question, I'm like, well, there, there is somebody who's out at night all the time.
There is, there is.
So you no longer concur?
I didn't say I concurred with the recommendation, I was just saying maybe there's no way to get it done because it is a good idea, but it's just, we don't have the staff and the ability to do it.
You could give Barry the light meter.
Yeah.
He can drive around in all his spare time.
We could give, we could give roving gangs of high schoolers.
Lose a lot of street signs.
All right, I'm, I'm all done, thank you, sorry.
Becky?
I had a question on number 18. It was, I think, so they're saying utilize the website, they assume we, that they mean the town's website?
Probably, I mean, we don't have, right, I think they want, I mean, we all have lots of handouts. So people who go down there want to do, we just had a nice little grant co- through with DEP, we have all new signage down there, color-coded, some awesome handouts. Web design, I'm, I was a little sarcastic in that comment up there, we don't have, we don't have our web developer anymore to, to help me with a website. So we have a transfer station website that's basic and we have links to all our paperwork, but we don't have, I don't, I don't know what else we do, I don't know what else they want up there, to be honest with you.
Okay, well, actually.
When you click on a transfer station on the, on the website, doesn't that, that's available?
I find that all of the data, that knowing about what can and can't be recycled, test, I mean, it's amazing that, that stuff.
Yeah, so I don't.
So actually, my question has to do more with Mark, your comment. It says, this happens to be a goal of the town manager this year.
To get more information out on the website. It is.
I see. I didn't know whether your recommendation had to do specifically with, to provide recycling information.
No, 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 I'm sorry, just to get more information out, I did not need, that, you know something, as I'm reading that, Becky, that's not clear, so, hey. No, my, my goal is to make the website more interactive. And this would, but I, I always think you already get that information on the website.
It's, there's, there's quite a bit there. It tells what you can and can't do. I think there's math or what's.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I.
And then the final is the city center.
Uh, but wait, some more.
Oh, sorry.
Um, so I reviewed all these recommendations as well. And I think that 90% of the responses that Tom and Mark gave, I agree with. I think on the 10% that I don't agree with, it's just a different philosophy. One of the things I strongly recommend though is, we have a tremendous amount of assets contained within your department of building maintenance. And that really co, formalizing a software program that says, okay, the HVAC filters on Town Hall were changed on such and such a date. And the burner in Town Hall was serviced on such and such a date. And Legion Hall, and now carry that across every facility that you're in charge of.
Absolutely.
And.
I, I reference, that's what I, I am looking for that right now. Our big stuff, we have to service contracts for that we can't handle, the little ones we do, we do in spring, summer, usually spring, summer, fall.
To me, by having every single one of the things that needs to be maintained by building maintenance is huge. And if we recall many years ago, before your position was, um, created in the charter, or actually.
In the charter?
Yeah, in the charter. And we had a building maintenance supervisor that also had a position. That position was eliminated. And then you designated one of your employees to be in charge of building maintenance and projects and things like that. And it's worked out very successfully. And if I recall, I don't believe we added any staff in order to make that occur. But if we want to maximize the asset retention program that we have, A, through computerization and tracking of, you know, not just the units on our buildings, but all of the equipment, your trucks, everything along those lines, it's going to take you more staff. And that there could well be an additional FTE or multiple, not multiple FTEs, but shared FTEs. One FTE in order to do the data input and the tracking of that. And I think the input is probably the biggest task. And that once it's inputted, that the task of tracking it will be easier. But certainly, the more that you do in-house, the more you're going to need employees. And the cost of having an employee in-house in the future as opposed to contracting it out to somebody else, I think there's a huge net savings. So I think that while I'm not advocating at the moment for adding another employee or an FTE, I think it's worth looking at to see how that would benefit the town and. or an FTE, I think it's worth looking at to see how that would benefit the town and how much money that might save, and then certainly might be an offset between the hiring and the cost of farming something out. That's all.
I agree.
Jack?
For what it's worth, the town website seems to be down right now.
I'm working on it.
Thanks.
Yeah, we'll get that fixed. And that's pretty much it. Other than that, I think that you've done less with more, or more with less. More with less. And it's a good model, Tom.
Didn't we have somebody tell me, say, give Tom the lady a bucket of nails and a hammer and you can do anything?
You give him a bucket of nails and a hammer, he can do that build-out he needs in his garage.
You probably could, but we won't get anything else done for a while. Like I said, I agree with you, Josh. I'm looking at four different programs right now. There's WorkI2, WebDPW, one by Nuvo Systems, and I don't know what called Dude Solutions. All four of those are...
Dude Solutions?
We got to go with that one. Just by the name, you got to go with that one.
Well, except they call all the time. All the time, we get done.
Unbelievable.
But they're all good. Some of them are, some are, some are, are Sky Based, can be rented per month. But there's two that are really user-friendly. That's going to be the biggest part of it. But they're all encompassing. They cover billing maintenance, they cover, you know, even the signs, work order systems, as well as preventing maintenance from the buildings and vehicles.
You know, these cloud-based programs that are out there, and what not, are great. Because once you buy something, then you're tied into paying for the upgrades and the updates on an annual basis.
No.
Most of them are fairly cheap. I mean, they're only, most of them look at only like $3,000 or $4,000 a year. So it's not like they're outrageous.
That when you use a cloud-based system, all the upgrades are part of the monthly fee.
You're right.
That's what I was trying to say, so...
Those fees can rack it up pretty nice.
I switched from my software program to a cloud-based program, and I resisted it for four or five years. And I did it, and I'll tell you, very happy I did. But you do pay for it.
Yep.
No question about it. All right, thank you, Tom.
Finally, thank you, Tom. Finally, is senior center.
Are they recommending a new one?
No.
No.
Any questions?
I have a question that's not senior center-related. My question is, were there any similar recommendations or types of things that came out of the fire department review that should be incorporated here somehow?
You know, that's a good question, Allison. I don't know, I got to talk to Steel about that. I haven't seen the final report. You saw the 174-page document. I have not...
We're looking for the bulleted list.
Yeah, I haven't got to do it in detail. Okay, I want to thank all the department heads for taking the time to go through this and helping me create this document. I think it's very comprehensive. I appreciate the work that they did, and I look forward to moving this goal forward with the board.
Before we move on, and thank you, I very much agree with that, Mark. It's a great start. Before we move on, any questions on the public?
Then we'll get that posted on the website once the website's back up.
Okey-dokey. Next. Am I missing something?
No. Never mind, I'll go with the last one.
So we're on...
I'm on number five. So I'm pleased to, I'm pleased to inform the board that Patricia and Fran and I have come to agreement on a new three-year contract for her remains as our town accountant.
What page is that on, please?
It's page three.
Wow.
Number five of the town manager's report. The red line contract is...
No, it's page 26.
No, I'm looking for the contract. I read what you've got.
Well, what I have, summarizing the changes to the contract. But basically, Patricia has been five years now?
Six.
Six years.
Time flies, huh?
As our town accountant, she's done just an absolutely amazing job. And I'm not saying that because she's sitting here. I say it even if she wasn't sitting here. And she's been a pleasure to work with, and when, you know, time came to negotiate the contract, I hoped that she wanted to stay. And at first she said no, and no, she didn't say no. Both her and I mutually agreed that she's wonderful and we want to keep her on board. So we conducted a salary survey of the position. We shared those results with the personnel board, as I told you earlier. It was really hard to pigeonhole the numbers because in some towns that we use for comparisons, the town accountant is also the director of finance. Some towns, they had alternate roles as budget director and things like that. So we tried to come up with what we thought was the best package. And so what I negotiated with Patricia is a new three-year contract, a salary of $88,900 in FY19, which equates to a salary adjustment of 4% based on the comps and based on the performance over the last several years. And then a 1.5% increase in both FY20 and '21. We allowed her to carry over five additional vacation days. I think you were capped at 20 days, and we upped it to 25 days. She agreed that if she comes up, right now she's not on the town's insurance, but if she ever needs to come on the town's insurance, it will be at 30%, as is the goal of the selectmen. And then we gave her the same benefits that the other department heads get that she never received in the past, and that was longevity and personal days, and that's the supervisor's contract. And we'll see, that's in the red line version of your contract. So I'm very pleased with this contract. It's in the budget that I presented to you, the budget that you have, the balanced budget and the 3% growth. These numbers are included in that budget. These contract terms are included in that budget, and I would urge the selectmen to ratify that again.
So I just have one question, well, two questions, actually. First is, are you actually going to use those personal days?
Yeah, I know I am.
Yeah, I mean, he needs a downtime, right? Okay, all right. I don't know if this was an oversight, or it wasn't mentioned, and I apologize for not zeroing out in section five.
What page, Barry?
I'm on page 28 of the packet. The performance incentive program is something that I thought we were modifying.
We did not take that out of our contract. I left it as, that's why I didn't identify it, because it wasn't a change.
I recognize that.
Yeah.
I think we changed it that it wouldn't be part of the base anymore.
Fortunately, the way it reads in this contract, it shows as an additional increase, which means it would apply to the base.
Well...
That's the way I read this.
No, no, I agree with you saying, but the new performance incentive program would say it's not. So let me clear up that language and make it clear in the contract.
Please, because otherwise they can be in con...
Patricia, that's what you and I talked about.
Otherwise, they can be in conflict.
Yep, I agree.
And they're in conflict. We can cut off, so I don't want to have any...
The language is a lopsom.
Yeah, and that's, that would be more what I think...
It's a bit different, I think, than what...
But I think the conversations we've had as a board and going forward have been along those lines. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Barry, thank you for pointing that out. One hundred percent correct.
You are 100% correct. Jack?
Sorry, unmuted. Again, under section five, the first bulleted line, July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2016...
We fixed that. Becky caught that, Jack, and the copy that's in the packet to the selectmen has been...
It shows 2019.
Yeah, it shows 2019 now.
Becky caught that.
And I'll have a couple other comments, but I probably should have started with this. Patricia, you know, any comments that we have here are related simply to a contract and the budget that I have here, related to just the way a contract works, budgets, et cetera, but not to your performance. It's been just extraordinary, just like de facto perfection. And I just can't be highly enough of your service, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
So I think, Mark, you mentioned that we're going to five accrued weeks, or what was it?
Five, right now, she's maxed out at a carryover of 20 days.
Yep.
And so she asked if we could make up it by five days to match the supervisor's contract to 25 days.
Okay.
And I agree to that.
So the base is the supervisor contract?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And did we also discuss healthcare contribution?
30%.
Okay, so there's basically a 4% raise and an increase in healthcare contribution.
Only, she's not on the health insurance now. If she gets on the health insurance, she would get on at 30%.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. Thank you. Those are my only questions.
The website's back up, by the way.
Thank you.
I'd ask the board to, unless there's any other questions, I ask the board to consider ratifying that.
Can I make a motion as amended?
Please.
Yeah, I'll move that we ratify the, with your agreement, if as amended, if that's okay. I move that the board ratify the town accountant's contract as amended.
A second.
Further discussion? We'll call vote.
Petropolis, aye?
You mean aye.
Peace, aye, strongly.
Heine, aye.
Deeg, an aye.
None of you are strong as Barry?
I was just going to say something if you'd given me a minute. Trish, you know, we have a lot of great employees here in town, and very dedicated employees. Your dedication is tremendous. You care about your job, you care about the town, and you treat it like it's your baby. And I know you're in charge of seeing these budgets through as approved by town meeting. And you do it with a fine-tooth comb, and you do it in a very positive, upbeat manner. So thank you and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's been my very great pleasure to serve as the town accountant for the last six years, and I'm looking forward to another three years of working with you.
Great. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have number seven in my town manager's report. We have the finance committee in joint session on Saturday to review the proposed operating budget. I thought the department heads did a very nice job presenting the facts, presenting their budgets to the board. I thought it was just an overall healthy discussion on the issues that we're going to be dealing with. I thought both the chiefs could restart the dialogue with the selectmen on the, on their proposals, and the proposal that I have in the budget for a public safety override. I'm a little saddened with the information that we got on the cost share with Dunstabil in terms of the Ryan Dunstabil Regional School District budget. I was hoping that the budget that I presented was going to meet the needs. Unfortunately, we're $119,000 short. We're going to have to figure out how to address that. But I wanted to set aside a few minutes tonight, just in case there was any other questions or any additional follow-up, excuse me, that the selectmen were looking for. The finance committee's meeting on February 6th to continue their review of the budget. I believe that's a data set, Bud?
It's the first Monday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I think it's 6:30.
6:30.
February 6th and 6:30, yeah. I'll be at that meeting.
So do we, I think that's great, and we did have a very good meeting. And I think that there are a lot of balls in the air at the moment, and I wish there were Velcro balls where they're sealing the corresponding, but they're not, so they are juggling. Question from Marlena, seeing that you're here. When are you going to have the budget for the district, and when will you vote on that?
We have to go by March 7th, and I'm hoping to have it the first meeting in February, which I want to have, I want to say the 7th, maybe?
That's what you say, Marlena.
Yep.
That would be very handy.
Yes, I agree. So we're going to go over it, discuss it as you do yours, and we'll have a vote on in a second.
Very good, thank you.
And I'll let you know when. You can walk into it then, of course.
Jack?
I'd like to ask Marlena a question. I was on the sustainability committee for the schools, and it seemed to die. And I'm just wondering, and we were really on sort of the same progress path we were on for the municipal one, and it may well be, I just stopped going, but I don't think so. I think, you know, I'll ask Bud's opinion, but I just wonder if Marlena can give us an update on where the sustainability initiative is for the school?
Sure, I think that we were at a point where the expense side was complete. The presentation has not been done yet. They were working on a catch-up on the revenue generation side of it. As you know, we've been in contract negotiations. Contracts for all negotiation teams are finalized except for GDA. There's a tentative agreement. They've been suspended while we were doing the GDA contract. Once concluded, that is our next step to move on with that. But as far as the sustainability, the only piece that actually remains is the revenue generation, with the change in the superintendent as well, and different discussions that we've had at the school community level in regards to athletic fees and a number of different things within our own budget that we're trying to work through. We are actually more so concentrating on different ideas and regressive revenue generation in order to alleviate some of the financial burden, not only for taxpayers, but also parents that are taxpayers that in addition to the taxes, they're paying $2,200 in support fees amongst many other different things. So it will come back online, but the contract negotiations were a priority.
Copy, Jack?
No, so I'll ask Bud for his input, but I have, the piece I was working on, I did work on the revenue side, I know that that, well, I didn't get anywhere, but we were working on the sustainability side, meaning what is our budget year-over-year growth, and what are the things that drive that growth? And we started to really nail that down into a format that worked, and it seemed to just stop. And really, the entire purpose of that format was to figure out what our minimum year-over-year growth had to be, just like we did in, on the municipal side. And I find it ironic that we're now, our biggest budget problem is the unsustainable year-over-year growth of the operational budget of the schools. And that, at least on the sustainability committee side, we, our work was really stopped halfway. But I'd ask you to sort of comment as to where you believe we're at. Maybe you know far better than me.
No, we're just where you said, Jack. We got to the point where we took the model that was used, and that's the director, Mike, put together a similar model as we talked about in town with the big three. I think it was big five or six of the school. And that model got to the point where we had identified all of the areas and some potential growth rates, et cetera. But it stopped at that point in time. As was mentioned by Marlena, went into negotiations on contracts. So nothing has happened since then. I think that once those contracts get done, we should get back to that model, just so the town, well, school probably may already have used that model, but then we can put a model together with the town to understand that we do have to get into the situation we discussed with overrides, then we go back to that model so we clearly understand what the potential concerns are, issues in that model that's going to create the override if we need one. So the answer is, it's stopped right now. I do think we need to get it going again, so that we have the same kind of model we finished up with the town.
Yes.
And we know what our issues are in town, and some other surprise is going to hit us, obviously, and a couple, they always do. But at least if we had the model the same, we could look at the school. And I'm sure that, you know, when Mike put together a five-year projection from Mark, he probably did have some model in his head. But it'd be good to see a model where we had the team back together working on it, because there were some really, you know, there's some good people on that team that work, that understand finance pretty well, and I think that that would help out the town in understanding where we need to get to. So I assume we're going to get back to that, Marlena?
Yeah, but correct me if I'm wrong, Bud, we, we got to a point where we were building a model, but we never finished our model, and a model allows various assumptions on labor or wage growth. And a good model would not need to wait for the results of negotiations. We can resolve and build a good model even while negotiations are in progress and plug in various assumptions for what if on wage growth. We just somehow stopped before getting to that point.
Well, I believe that when I saw the draft for the presentation, we were assuming a certain percentage, which in regards to negotiations, was something that was a concern for the school committee. So that's one part of it. Second part of it, we were actually going through an entire audit of every single operation of our school, which had come up different recommendations, which are actually in the midst of being considered and implemented down the line, which then will change your entire sustainability model. In addition, we also did an audit on our staffing and our offerings. Again, that information is going to be provided to us within a week, week and a half. That, again, will also change the model. So I can understand, and I understand that there's a lot of work that was done, and I can actually appreciate that work. and I can actually appreciate that work. But what I guess what I'm trying to say is, with the new information that has come out from the recommendations and changes that will be implemented in order to try and get the growth level down just from the audit recommendations, that information probably is the essential in regards to building a model for the schools, because we're almost changing as you're researching. So, I think that is something that we need to consider. But I agree. I have no challenge with moving along in regards to the sustainability findings. There was a differential in regards to we didn't have a capital plan approved even at that point, or fully established with the established pension fund. Free cash was not considered in regards to back then for part of a solution for one-time expenses. So, there was a lot of work done, but now with the audit recommendations coming out and revealing some different scenarios of opportunities, that also played as an X factor at this point.
Yeah, Jack. That's what I had just said, that there is a lot of good information coming available. In the model we have set up, we can now, because the model is set up, we can now feed this information into it. It'll change what the model looks like. But I think we've set it up to be able to understand it in a manner we do with the other side of it. And therefore, the work that's gonna come to fruition in another month, we then should start the sustainability backup with the... That team should be stocked back up, because it's gonna have a significant impact, I believe, on the way we move forward when we talk about some of these big items we're gonna have to talk about at town meeting. This model will work once you load in the new numbers, which are obviously more valuable than the current ones that are out there.
Jack, you all set?
I don't think that the model is matured, got a chance to mature. I think the model basically got abandoned. And we could have been getting the model to a point where it was hardy enough to be able to handle new inputs since they came in. So, I'm a little disappointed. I don't know why we need to wait, but if that's what we're told we need to do, that's what we'll do.
When we're changing bus routes, we absolutely will change structure of the budget in regards to that. When we're changing number of personnel, whether you're outsourcing, in just an overall picture, if we were to outsource custodians as 37 employees that are no longer growing at the same level of benefits and salaries, maybe reallocation of that money, which is exactly what our district had said that we were going to be doing, is reallocated into things that do not grow at that same level, would also decrease our growth rate. So, there are some things that would change in that model, just depending upon how many employees we currently have, whether we do, whether we do not outsource, whether or not we end up with three bus routes, two bus routes, change our school. You know, there are so many changes right now going on in our district. To think that they would not be of value to the outline of the model that you had is just inconceivable to me.
All set, Jack?
I think this is not in the agenda of the schedule. We're wanting to drag it out in for it.
If you'd like this schedule and you'd like to see a resumption in this, I think that I would reach out to the chair of the school committee and see if she would be so inclined to entertain it. And you let us know the results of that, and we can take that offline. Fair enough?
Thank you. Yep, thanks.
Are there any other issues that you need additional information from the audit? We're good for now.
No, I have some questions.
Ready to answer, Becky?
I guess the first question is, I don't... I'm obviously new to this process. When will we, as a board, discuss all of these budget items that you've put in there, whether we want them there or not?
Well...
We don't get that at this.
Well, we get to recommend.
Well, you get to recommend the budget. The budget that actually goes to town meetings, the budget of the Finance Committee. So, what the tradition of the board has been is to meet with the Finance Committee, attend their sessions, talk about the issues, see if the Finance Committee adjusts those based on your concerns. If they don't, then the board comes back here, discusses here whether or not they want to amend those. But until the Finance Committee does a final budget, there really isn't anything for the board of selectmen to vote on. That's been the history. Is that fair, Josh and Barry?
That is a kind of fair thing.
Yes.
However, my suggestion would be to jointly post every Finance Committee meeting.
Don and I have already talked about that.
With the board of selectmen. And the time to discuss a lot of the issues that you might have, the questions you have, typically has been to attend the Finance Committee. They go through the budget with the Finance Committee.
Oh, yeah. I'm talking about the general government stuff that we didn't talk about at all on Saturday. And I raised the question there, and the answer was, we'll discuss it tonight.
Well, how about it?
I'll answer any questions you have. But as far as the input into the final budget, I guess that point is the Finance Committee's. But please, ask me.
So, the $5,000 first, the Sustainability Committee to conduct surveys.
Yep.
What? What kind of surveys?
They asked... They have been doing a lot of work, and they have a happiness survey that they want to conduct. They have other issues having to do with sustainability, and they asked for $5,000 line item in the budget. I told them I would put that in. And I did. Remember, I brought that up in the fall.
I know.
You went to adjust the fall budget. The board said make it part of the budget process. So, that's what I did. I think we should probably have the Sustainability Commission come in and talk about exactly how they want to spend that money. I would imagine the FinCom's gonna do that.
Well, don't know yet, Bud.
Yeah. Well, I'm just guessing. But it's a good question, Becky. I just pass it through because that's what the selectmen asked me to do in the fall.
What is the GIS Steering Committee?
That is a... We used to have a committee called the GIS Steering Committee. The committee basically oversaw our GIS song, where we'd go to the town websites.
The maps, yeah.
The maps and all of that stuff. We left it named the GIS Steering Committee, because that's been the tradition. It's actually overseen by the IT department, and it basically pays our consultant to maintain and update the GIS system.
So, it's not actually a committee?
No, no. But that's what we call it. And that's what the tradition was for years, and that's how we left it. Probably about time we changed that, Trish.
We could, yes. Why are the elections stipends so much higher?
That's a very good question. Every other year, you will see a major increase and then a major decrease in that budget.
Okay, because it wasn't...
Based on the number of elections in a given year. This happens to be a big year where you have a fall primary, a spring primary, and a state election and a town election.
Okay. Is the municipal... Line 1540 is wages in municipal building and property maintenance?
Yep.
It's way up. Is that because of that person that we hired?
That's what we talked about Saturday.
Split around, okay. Parks Department wages, why are they way up?
Why? Did we get rid of the line item?
No. Why is... Parks Department wages are up 100 percent. Minus 100 percent, sorry.
Yeah.
They're down.
Down.
I eliminated the stipend because we used to pay Fran Stanley to be the Park Department clerk, take the minutes. When she became the Assistant Town Clerk, having her do that would put it into an overtime situation. So, when Paula Martin retired, and I advertised the land use administrative assistant, I added the duties of taking minutes of the Park Department to that job without increasing the hours. And so, I consolidated that to an existing job and saved $2,650. It was part of the consolidation we did when we moved everything along.
Great. Veterans Service Office expenses up 83 percent?
Expenses are up... Oh, yes. There's a new software system that... If you read Bob's memo, it clearly explains it. The way the state monitors and maintains things, they're making us have a secure software system. So, we need to pay the maintenance on that. I think it's $500.
Government rates.
Government rates.
Okay.
That's like an unfunded mandate from the state.
Well, but with all the things going on with Department Veteran Affairs, I think it's something that is definitely...
Needs to be protected. The information is required.
Absolutely.
And that's what that's all about.
Okay. Line 1680 wages, it says it's a 0 percent change, but it shows a change.
Do I have a formula problem? What department are we in?
Water Safety.
Water Safety, line 1680.
Yes. I'm sorry. I have to fix the formula on that. Thank you for catching that. I did increase that hours because the Sargent Beach Committee volunteer system is... The volunteers aren't as active as they once were. I need the ranger to be more active. So, I upped the ranger's hours on average up to 19 hours so that we could have more coverage at the beach to address some of the issues. Josh and I had a discussion about this particular issue, that I needed to have more oversight from the Conservation Commission. So, I increased the hours of the park ranger in some ways.
While you're on that subject, you could get an email recently from Parkersheet... I'm sorry, not from Parkersheet, from...
Nick?
Nick.
Thank you, from Nick. I appreciate that. Things change quick. Nick would like to have a meeting concerning the ranger's duties and whatnot. And the Sargent Beach Committee is having trouble getting a call, Marlena.
Maybe you, me, Andrew, and Nick could get together and talk about it? Because that's why I put the extra hours in there, so the ranger would take over some of those duties. So, we do need to talk some more.
So, would you put that in your notes, that after you get back from your...
Yep.
...leave, that we can get that set up?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, then new stipend for an ADA director, is that... That gets paid as a flat amount of minutes to cover any work that she does?
Yeah. What happened was, the ADA coordinator's position was part of the land use director's position. And Michelle did that for years as part of the job. But now that Michelle's retired, I still want her to be the ADA coordinator, and I do have to compensate her for that. So, that's why that's...
What, the same amount of money? $1,600, I think?
$1,500.
$1,500. We're not talking about the major stipend.
Right. But it's not... She doesn't have to put in timesheets for that or anything?
No, no.
She just gets it, and if she works, you know, 150 hours, she still gets it?
Yep. But you didn't add the selectman's stipend back in, of course.
That's all right.
I mean, we're happy to do that.
Thank you for not...
We knew it was my idea to eliminate it.
All right. So, I have a general question about the capital budget.
Please.
Please. And this is, again, I'm new here, but years ago, we had a citizen committee, a capital planning committee. And we don't have that anymore. So, who does capital planning, and where do the townspeople have input?
The capital budget is put together by the town manager, as required by the track. It's presented to the selectmen and the Finance Committee, and then it is voted on each year by town meeting. So, I would say the input into the... Whether or not you agree with the capital plan is with the first meeting and the Finance Committee. So, I would suggest that if there are specific questions to the plans, I'd be more than happy to answer why we put that...
And then at the public hearing.
Yep. On the walk.
On the walk.
Correct.
Well, so then I have two other questions about that. First, you said you were pulling off the Lost Lake sewer.
We will pull it off. Next, we will pull it off as next year's capital plan. It will not occur again. Because remember, when I put that capital plan together was before I get the report.
Right. But so, it is still there on what's up on the website for people to see?
Correct.
And is there a reason that you wouldn't want to just pull that off now?
I guess I could. I mean...
Now, I just worry that it's out there, it's voted out there...
People think it's gonna happen.
That, you know, you think that you want this to happen in four or five years. And we know that we don't want it to happen.
Oh, the continuation of the Lost Lake sewer?
No.
Yeah, that's exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
No, it was determined that it was a four-corner sewer.
Yeah.
But in the capital plan, these have a sewer in the Lost Lake.
And based on the recommendations of the consultant that the Lost Lake Wastewater Committee had, they determined that the addition of a sewer would have no positive impact.
And that's why we don't want it.
Therefore, it should come off the capital plan. I didn't realize that was there. Thank you for catching that. Very much agreed. I'm just gonna think I was...
I know, processing her...
Yeah, I hadn't thought that first. It's a great idea. Do you have any other great ideas this evening?
I'll take care of that, Becky.
Yeah. So, the item that's on the capital plan for this year that I think deserves some discussion is the Highway Department garage.
Yep.
And so, will we keep discussing that?
It's in the capital plan. It's in the capital plan to do a feasibility study. I'm proposing that we do it. I'm proposing to the Finance Committee and board of selectmen. Yeah, whenever you're ready to have that discussion, I'd like to have you to be here for it, and we can debate it. I would imagine we'll debate with the Finance Committees, they both do the plan. But that is something that I really think we need to do. If we don't move forward with it, we should at least know what the problems are.
February 12th, please.
All right, loading up that agenda.
Well, you know something? A budget season in this time, our meetings have been known to run water.
Right.
But they don't like to midnight, like some people's meetings.
So, I guess I understand that the capital plan process is spelled out in the charter. But I would say that we're better served to have a lot more publicity and advance notice that we are thinking about capital plans than have them just show up out of the blue, which...
Well, I think the capital plan, I hear what you're saying about out of the blue, but the capital plan is, I want to call it a living document, in that what is slated for future fiscal years sometimes is accelerated and moved forward, sometimes it's pushed back. And it's imperative that we have this plan so we can fund our capital stabilization account for which we pay for this capital moving forward. So...
So, I guess maybe it would be appropriate to ask for those of you who have been on this board longer than I have, was that town highway garage being talked about in the past?
Once identified through the matrix report, I think that was one of the things that first came up. But if you've ever spent...
It's not mentioned in the matrix report.
I thought...
It was discussed during the... It was discussed during the...
The meetings.
During the Sustainability Committee meetings. We talked about it. Tom Delaney brought it to my attention and asked for it to be accelerated. And every year, when I look at the capital plan, you know, sometimes we add things you've never seen before, and I have to figure out whether it makes sense to do it. And I wanted to do it fiscal year 2019. So, I made that decision. I brought it forward. You guys can reject it. You can accept it. You can put it off. You can do what you want. But my job is to bring these issues forward, talk about them. And they have to appear on the plan at some point. And I decided officially in 2019 was when I wanted that on the plan.
Well, so, I don't feel like I have any kind of information to be able to evaluate that idea.
My suggestion would be is to contact Tom Delaney and any of the other selectmen that need to do so, and go on a tour of the public works facilities that are down there, and take a look at how the trucks have to be stuffed into the bays, as well as look at the brake areas and the furnace and the various situations that exist down there. I've spent over the years a very long time there, and I know the lay of the land. And it wouldn't hurt for you to see what's going on down there.
I agree that it would be useful to see. I guess I kind of see the process a little differently, that if a department head wants something, that maybe they should be reaching out and inviting us rather than throwing it back.
I think that makes sense. I also find it really hard to fathom that Tom really has time or interest to hear from each of us, to each of the FinCom members individually, to ask the same questions over and over.
Well, we'll bring him in on the meeting. That you could point out. So, we'll bring him in on the meeting as well.
And maybe he should invite anybody who's in house to, you know, set up an appointment for a little tour.
And I just want to be a dead horse more generally. I think it's really important to understand the capital plan is a living document and that it's going to change. I think it's free market. You're so willing to update it. And I assume that that willingness to update it would also include putting in our broad responsibility for the regional school district as well.
And just a little bit of a touchy subject, but we did hear earlier this evening that perhaps we want to make some capital improvements in Prescott.
At this point, the reason that I haven't put anything in Prescott in the capital plan is because the selectmen's position on Prescott, up until whenever, the last known position was no taxpayer funds to be expended on Prescott. That's a direction I have from the selectmen at this time. And until the selectmen change that, I'm not adding anything to the capital budget. I need direction from you. My last direction to you, no taxpayer dollars on Prescott. Am I wrong on that directive?
That is the vote in every color.
Thank you. So, I want to be sure I'm clear. But I understand what you're saying, Becky.
But the situation that we may face...
Okay. Well, then that, then I have to adjust accordingly.
Will require, perhaps, you know, some creative thinking about if the school district moves out and we've got a third floor that we can...
You mean when they move out? Jack?
I think it's far too absolute to say no taxpayer dollars on Prescott. There's no reason we can't entertain, for instance, CBT funds, which contain taxpayer dollars.
Not in my capital plan.
There's no reason we can't entertain the idea of fixing a doorway. And that's the request. And we...
Jack, there's maintenance money in the budget. That's different.
And we want Prescott to be eventually... We don't want the Prescott to be turned into a country club scenario. We want the Prescott to be self-stating. I don't think that we've actually come forward with an actual position on Prescott at this point. And I intend to actually try to do something about that very quickly.
We have come forward with an actual position.
This car garage, there will be no taxpayer dollars. That's not good, guys.
The CPA is not under the town manager's jurisdiction. The capital budget is funded by taxpayer dollars. Well, the CPA is taxpayer dollars, not in my purview. My direction from the board was, in my understanding from the board, was no taxpayer dollars. And that's all I'm saying as to why I haven't added it to my capital plan. When the board directs me to start considering that, there will be an inclusion in the capital plan.
I would ask you, Mark, if you're gonna use a mantra for how to fund Prescott, that it be the goal of Prescott is to not have it rely on taxpayer funds?
Jack, currently, there is a three to two vote of the Board of Selectmen with, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, yourself and Selectwoman Pine voting, not voting to support, but... yourself and selectwoman Pine, uh, voting, not voting to support, but, uh, Allison Manugian, Barry, and myself said no taxpayer funds. Now, that does not mean that there is not money to fix a doorway, or a broken toilet, or a heating system, and.
What's that put me?
I think we need to talk about this sometime.
We need to talk about this. Mark, did you carry a line out of an FY nineteen budget for Prescott maintenance?
No.
Well, you're gonna need to put that in.
Okay, well, that, again.
I didn't realize that.
All right, again, the directive to the board, to me.
Was capital.
Was no taxpayer dollars on Prescott.
Look, the town owns the building.
Okay, I didn't stand that.
And there's certain obligations that the friends of Prescott will have if they enter into a lease, but there's also certain obligations that the town will have on this, and you, Jack, and Bud are gonna need to work that out as part of this lease.
Fine, but until, until I get direction from the board, I did not put it in the budget because I was not told to put it in the budget.
I got you right now.
That's fine, Josh, I'd like to find a copy of that vote, and, um, and I'd also just like to, again, remind ourselves that our mantra is no taxpayer funds, and CBC funds is a violation of that mantra. So we have to have to change our mantra or decide it's no CBC funds for Prescott.
Don's gonna look through that vote, okay? I believe it to be somewhere between August and October of two thousand and seventeen to help you look for that.
I'll give you whatever you find.
Okay, um, so Jack, I understand your point, and Becky, do you have any further budgetary questions?
No, thank you.
Anyone else?
Just first, I just wanna say that I made a point with Mark for probably two hours to go through it all, because I'm having a lot of trouble, some of which I assume is being new to it, and some of which perhaps has to be figured out approach laundry.
I can't wait for that meeting.
Okay, um, the two of you enjoy yourselves, and do me a favor. Uh, all finance committee meetings, would you please, any that are scheduled, please give us a notice.
February sixth will be posted as a select call.
Any other ones that you know might be occurring, the quicker we get noticed, the better.
You haven't scheduled anything beyond the sixth, right?
I didn't, you didn't say the sixth, I believe you said the seventh.
No, it was the sixth, I said it was on the seventh.
Didn't come up with the sixth.
Is that Tuesday night, Tuesday the sixth?
Six thirty.
FinCom always tries to be the first Tuesday of the month.
I'll be around, check the plan.
Inside or out?
Hopefully inside, fine.
So, um.
That way.
Since we've been having so much fun tonight, into other business, Mr. Chairman.
I'd love to help with this.
Yeah, so, consider changing the name of the board of selectmen to Select Board of the Town of Groton. We gave you what happened in Brookline, and what's very interesting about what happened in Brookline is.
Oh, I saw.
They took an approach to change the name Selectman to Selectwoman, and that any man could run, which I thought was very interesting to get that issue out, and then they ended up voting to change it to Selectboard.
Can I say something?
Please.
Certainly, that I have, and I don't know how Jack and Barry feel about this being the other male members of the board, uh, and I don't know how I.
You have no right to gender identify.
Just jump in, Doc.
But let me just go with this, the very first meeting that Becky and Allison attended as the newly-elected individuals to this board, I said that, how would you like to be called, Selectwoman, Selectperson, whatever? Bottom line is, I don't care what you call me, call me anything you want, all right? Bottom line is, we're elected officials, call ourselves Selectboard of the Town of Groton, and that if I want to be a Selectman or a Selectwoman or a Selectperson, I can decide that, and if you want to go by Selectwoman or SelectMs or Selectman or Selectdude, you can go by whatever you want. I think a Selectman or Selectwoman would be completely appropriate, members of the Selectboard.
Yes, but we have to do something official, Josh.
That's official.
Well, no, we've gotta change the charter, we've gotta change the bylaws, there's a lot that would need to be done to make that.
So let's do it. I have no problem being called Selectboard.
All right, so my question is, Brookline obviously went to a town meeting, but, and you are correct that, um, in order to, I think, pique people's interest and make them think there were the two proposals. One was, let's just change it to the Board of Selectwomen, and the men that get elected are the, anybody who doesn't want to identify themselves as a woman can call themselves whatever they want, which is a version of what Josh has just said. I think there is a very, very different situation to have the official name be something that does not require a gender identification. And so I assume, I, there was not a lot of material you sent us from Brookline, it looks like they go really overboard in.
Thank you.
In, you know, publicizing all their committee's opinions about things, but, um, I assume that what was passed at Brookline was to change to the Selectboard.
Selectboard.
And they did it in a town meeting vote.
Yep.
And I, I guess the question is, Drew, is that the process we would need to use to have a town meeting vote?
Well, if I may, I can't find a charter for the Town of Brookline, so I don't think they have a town charter. So they run by bylaws, in which case a town meeting vote is completely appropriate for them to be able to change this. Because Groton has a charter, because that charter's been, um, redone recently, and the name of the board is, 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 is throughout the entire thing done a certain way. In order to make that change, I think we have to call an amendment to the charter, which we might as well, if we're gonna do that, let's call Senate Council now, say do not implement that charter, we have another set of revisions we'd like to bring in to call town meeting, just bring town meeting. And, and we should make that change, because otherwise, you're gonna submit a charter, get all ratified and done by Senate Council, and then you're gonna go right back.
That's a pretty good point.
Go right back to the drawing board and redo it again. Not that I'm against doing that, like I said, the process to me that would work best would be, call Senate Council, some of the charter's on hold, because we have another change, a major change, even though it's just wording, it's still.
It's a major change.
It's the entire document.
I don't want to interrupt, but could we call Senate Council and, and just discuss the fact that we want to put this on the town meeting warrant this spring, if we do, um, and what do they recommend? Do they recommend that they go ahead with whatever they're doing now and they will easily add this in? Or do they recommend holding off, and then we do what they say? Just discuss the question.
Easy phone call.
But in my opinion, it's not just an amendment to the charter, changing language in almost every charter. It's one thing if you have a subsection, like if you look at code three sixty, you look at the previously approved charter, excuse me, I'm trying to differentiate it too, you'll see that this section was amended by town vote X, Y, Z, and it just changes wording from A to B. In order to do the charter that way, that exists, they would have to go in and issue an amendment for every single section of the charter where the board of selectmen exists and versus Selectboard exists.
And we would have to change every bylaw in town.
And that's the other part, that's done with town meeting, that's easier to do, but.
Yeah, but there's gonna be a lot of articles.
Said spread.
And the signs at the high school, and the signs at the fire station, and the signs at the police stations.
Like.
On the drawn, on the drawn stocks. And on the stones?
I, you know.
No, it doesn't say selectmen.
I, I think that.
He's just making your.
Sorry, Allison.
I just.
Yes, Jack, one moment.
That, um, so I don't personally feel very strongly about this one way or the other, but I do not personally see changing from Board of Selectmen to Selectboard to be a major change to the charter. To me, it is no different than the kind of scrutiny there, that changed all the capitalization to lowercase and that kind of thing. So whether we want to do this or not.
I'm trying to interrupt.
Whether we want to do this or not is certainly a big question, but this is not akin to an amendment for every time the Board of Selectmen shows up in the charter.
But we still need a town meeting vote, no?
Yes, but it's not.
No, I understand, I, I, I think what Barry's point is, is you need to change a lot of sections of the charter from Selectman to Selectboard, if, that's what you can go.
Very easy to do.
No, no, I agree it's easy to do, but that's still a major undertaking.
I think it's easy to do in a word document, I'm not declaring anything easy to do in the state of Massachusetts with the governor's call.
Right, but if you look at the wording that Brookline used, they just, it was very clear, every place where the term Board of Selectmen or BOS or not Selectmen occurs, that they will change it this way in every, you know, so, can you clarify for me, Senate Council, is that like Senate attorney?
Attorney in the Senate, yes.
So, this, uh, I don't believe we will be the first town to have asked this question, and let's let them tell us whether this is gonna be a really major big deal that, you know, is gonna require more than we think, or whether we could go ahead and do this and it's not, and it'll be a small blip.
You have light and shine tomorrow, make that top right.
Okay, one second.
At the same time, it probably also makes sense to ask the town council how we would change it in all of our bylaw regulations, whether that can just be one.
Blanket vote.
Blanket vote, or whether we need to really.
Yeah, we're gonna get to Connie, but Jack chimed in first, so, um, Selectjack.
So, um, I, I think that before we go and start talking to the state about our fickleness, um, we should ask our town council what they advise here. It may well be how council advises to go forward, allow the charter to be approved as it is, and that we can make some amendment that has some home rule applicability that supplies until the next time that we get our charter amended.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree.
It's a very easy resolution and probably the smartest first call we can make.
Yeah, but I'm gonna disagree, Jack, that we can just do something here. The charter is a state law, and to amend the state law takes a vote of the two houses of the legislature and the signature of the governor.
Yeah, so Mark, I'm asking the county council's opinion.
Just, Mark, it's really simple, call up David Dineski, ask him, you're probably gonna get the answer that you think, and then call Senate Council, per Becky's recommendation, to see, or Barry's, whoever.
I'm turning this over, I can tell manager to do shot tomorrow to take care of first thing.
You're gonna have Mike do it.
Yeah, because Mike.
And it's.
All right, well, yeah, I mean.
He was on that committee.
So he actually, he actually has been working with the Senate Council right now, so the best person is Mike.
Oh, I guess he wasn't on it.
Fair enough.
He was, and then he was on it.
Have him let us know.
Does Board of Selectmen, based on this discussion right now, want an article on the water for this change? Or do you want to hold off on that discussion?
Hold off until we get the answer.
Well, we want it tentatively.
I know, but I'm waiting.
All right, Connie Sartine.
I'm, I'm curious, what is the genesis of this change? Where did it originate, was this someone in the community who asked for a change? Can you share that information, please?
Um. I can share.
Please do.
Um, I heard from several members of the community. I, um, spoke with a former member of our community, Christine Wong, who is now a member of the Selectboard in the Town of Royalston, that had, I, they changed their name. And we also, I think all of us received a written letter. I was, I put this on our first list of goals for this year, as a goal of the board. And I, and the person who sent us the letter had some very well-thought-out suggestions and reasons why language matters. And I think some of that was also seen in, in what Brookline proposed, um, that, and, and which goes back to, yes, Josh, you did ask us that first day, um, it really wasn't something I had thought carefully about at that point, and I have thought more seriously about it, and I think it's worth doing. But yes, we did hear from the community.
And there.
Okay. Is there other vehicles now where the community, community received information then?
I don't know.
And you know.
So we got, we get emails, and there was, I remember at least one, if not two emails on the subject sent to us to spawn this. Um, I will, I will note that there's no, uh, there's no fault here on the town or the forefathers. The, the state legislature and all the national laws calls these boards, these types of boards, these policymaking boards and towns, Board of Selectmen, it's in the state legislature, so that naturally trickles down to a town-by-town basis without necessarily the intention of being, uh, gender biased, if you will. So, and again, I have no problem going back to state saying, hey, we're changing our state law so it doesn't reflect yours, that's no problem, but, um, uh, I would encourage people who have an opinion on this to please keep sending emails to the Board of Selectmen and let us know. You know, I have a daughter, and I personally tell her, I don't care what the name of the board is, you go and raise your hand and you can kick butt. And you don't care if you're a boy or a girl, right? It doesn't matter, but other people feel differently, and that's, that's their prerogative, and I certainly am, am sensitive to that.
Okay, thank you.
This is gonna be an action-packed town meeting, I just want you all to be up for five minutes.
All right, so ask Mike after he gets, Mike Richard, after he gets the answer to this question, to send the answers that he received to the selectmen, get it to Don, and she'll send it as part of the communications to us, just so we know where this stands. All right?
Then the final item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is for Allison to provide on the recreation marijuana forums issued, next step, so Allison.
Um, I don't actually have a heck of a lot, the next step at this point is that the planning board is having their hearing on their two town meeting, um, warrant items, on February eighth, I believe, Thursday night, it's gonna be a busy week. The first of their two proposals is to extend the moratorium through the end of this year, which effectively gives us more time to get our ducks in a row, as well as the state level to get their work done. Gives us some additional protections there, so we don't end up completely exposed. And then their second proposal at this point is a change in the zoning bylaws that would presume for now that marijuana establishments will become part of our community, and they would, that change at town meeting would be implementing the same regulations that are placed basically for medical marijuana, again, so that we have protections in place. Moving forward, then this board is the board that would need to discuss and make a decision as to whether we want to put something forward to the ballot, and then potentially there would be fall town meeting ramifications to that action, depending on the outcome.
Barry?
Uh, I'd like to discuss some events since you brought up that idea of putting something on the ballot. We did receive a very articulate and well-thought email regarding the, the challenges of a vote at the state level just saying, yeah, it's okay to have recreational marijuana, and one, when it comes to the local level of, wait, do I really want that in my town? And I think that's a valid shift that can happen in people's psyche, and, um, based on that logic and idea, and many others, I'm fully in support of putting a question on the ballot whether or not we should have recreational marijuana. And for that matter, I actually also be inclined, oh, we cannot prohibit medical period, correct?
No.
Right.
So, so I would be inclined to support putting that on the ballot.
We can do that, and I, I, you know, from a theoretical perspective, certainly agree with the idea of putting it forward to a vote. We need to understand, as we discuss this further, who would draft that verbiage and how it would align with the various opt-out alternatives.
Yeah.
Um, whether we want to potentially ban or restrict one, two, six, all types, how we want to move forward, how we make sure that that verbiage lines up with the requirements for opt-out at the state level. We then need to be aware that opt-out language at town meeting in the fall needs to be approved to match the ballot, and that that's a two-thirds, um, majority at town meeting, so that's a pretty high bar. So we just need to really understand all the potential as we go forward, making decisions, and make sure that we're not just picking one and saying, oh, we'll do this, and kind of ignoring all of that.
We certainly can, and we're that guidance, right? We're that guy, we're the, we're that, we're those individuals who narrow it down to, we think these are the two best possibilities if you'd like to restrict, and clearly, if you don't want to restrict all your vote, not to restrict on both, right? I think that's a great summation, there's a lot of work to be done in that. I certainly think that we have the correct awareness and resources now to be able to, as we get closer and closer to build process. And we want to set a stake in this and start reviewing this. Well, here's the challenge, I suspect that we need to understand some of that process prior to Springtown meeting, because we need to decide whether or not we want to advocate a hundred percent for moratorium and against zoning perhaps, that's all I'm saying.
Right.
There might be, as a selectman, I would want to know that pathway, where it might end up, so that I know, yes, I want to support the moratorium, this is conjecture, maybe I do, maybe I don't, but no, I don't want to support the zoning change yet.
So I, yes, I, I think as we discuss it, the moratorium has, has received support basically from everyone in that it just gives us additional protections. Moving along to the second piece at Springtown meeting, which would be regulations presuming that marijuana, medic, or that recreational marijuana will be coming to Groton, we really do need to move forward with that at Springtown meeting, because if we decide to put a question on the ballot and that fails, we then are totally exposed. So it really is. the ballot and that fails, we then are totally exposed. So it really is, I, I think, in our best interest to extend the moratorium, to get regulations in place that presume those entities will be coming, then we can have a discussion around ballot. And then if we decide to have a ballot question, and it is determined that the community wants to opt out of potentially all marijuana establishments, then at the fall town meeting, we would again change the bylaws to reflect that. So that, that path forward gives us, I think, the, the most protection in terms of being completely exposed and having no regulation, which I think we could all agree is, is a pretty unappealing scenario.
So in your scenario, if I walk down a timeline, we're speaking about at this, at the Springtown meeting, we, we perhaps do these rights at the May elections, we, we consider a ballot for opt-out.
Yes.
That way at the fall town meeting, we can react to the results of that without incurring another town meeting.
Correct. And then we have all of our regulations in place before the moratorium ends at the end.
So, so we don't have a lot of time to figure out the pathway to voting. We, we have the three weeks after town meeting to figure that out.
Right. And I don't know, um, I know I have it in my notes somewhere, but we may need to talk with Mike Bouchard to understand what all the dates are for us to make a decision on a ballot.
Since you have to make the decision, put something on the ballot, why do five days before?
Yeah, four days, right, yeah. So we don't have a lot of time.
So that would be prior to a town meeting.
We have a little bit more.
So we should schedule this sometime in February for this question.
Absolutely.
Jack had a question.
I think a lot of it's been covered, but just to try to simplify, I, I personally agree with Barry. I'd like to see two very clear paths laid out. What if we want to sell marijuana in town? What if we don't want to sell marijuana in town? And I, I want us to commit to a, a question on the ballot this spring to allow us, to allow residents to make that decision, and then for us to follow whichever path residents have made a decision on at the spring by bringing the required, um, uh, zoning regulations forward, either having provisionally adopted them this spring if necessary, or enacting them, adopting them in the fall. Anyway, my biggest concern is getting a commitment to a yes/no question on the spring town ballot. And it's, and it's your question, Allison, of who, who writes it. To my recollection, there, a proponent writes the yes question, and an opponent writes the no question. And it can be anybody. Um, it can be multiple people can provide their versions, and someone can synthesize them.
Well, town council will synthesize.
You don't need two questions. You mean, a, a proponent writes, we, we create a yes/no question.
In favor and against.
And we get two people to say what they want.
Correct. That's what Jack is saying. Yes. You're right, Becky.
So, so two, two concerns or things to bring up. The first is, Jack, you mentioned somewhat casually the idea that we wouldn't want to sell marijuana. So I'm not sure whether you're looking for an opt-out that would prohibit retail, or an opt-out that would ban all establishments. We just need to be really clear.
Okay.
Um, and then the second piece has completely slipped my mind.
It's late, it's late, Allison, you're forgiven.
It is. We have more time.
Well, I have a question.
For the one that, for the, um, I, I would imagine that residents think of it this way. We do or don't sell marijuana in our town. If it's impossible to ban medical marijuana sales, then it's impossible. However, my understanding is that it is unlikely to have medical marijuana sale organizations only. Any organization that sells marijuana is going to sell them both. And if you have, if you prohibit one, you will likely not attract any.
So are you focusing, Jack, and I'm just trying to clarify, on just a ban that would eliminate or prohibit retail sales? You're okay with cultivation, testing, production?
It may require two ballot questions.
Right. And that's where it starts to get really, really messy.
So I apologize, I take us down a bad route. It certainly sounds like we have to have this on a jet item in February.
Absolutely.
To discuss all these nuances.
And that's what I was gonna say, that with regard to how the ballot item is crafted, in this case, it, it is very specific, because it has to align with the state regulations there. And there are, again, we need to figure out, not so much who could, who would write that, but what are they writing? Are they banning retail? Are they banning everything? And then there are specific regulations around town. Council has to do certain summaries and...
So there's plenty of examples of this already, with towns having already had these votes. So I think that there's, um, some baseline work we can leverage.
We'll, we'll, we'll come up with it, we'll put it on a, an agenda in February, probably the 20th.
Yeah, we're gonna meet on the Tuesday night.
I'm not here the 20th.
You're not here? It won't be the 20th, because Allison should be here for that.
That's, that's school vacation, like, I'm careful of that.
Okay. We'll schedule, we'll schedule the, we'll schedule the debate. Uh, and, and Jack, I'll do, we'll do research to other towns to see what they've done in terms of how many, who put questions on the ballot. We can send out a research question on that.
We need to get this on. So if they're not gonna be here on the 20th...
It'll be the 26th.
They have to be on the 20th. Will you be back till the 26th?
Yeah, we'll do it on the 26th. All right, I got it.
Wait.
Thanks, Mark.
But wait, there's one.
Another, I have two, two other questions. Um, Mark.
Yep.
As part of what you research, uh, it just occurs to me that people have their land in 61A protection and, and are registered as doing agriculture, have a lot of leeway. There are certain aspects of bylaws that they don't have to follow. Are they allowed?
Marijuana cultivation is not considered part of the right to farm.
Okay.
We've already done that research.
So we do know that, okay.
Well, other than the right for individuals to grow whatever the legislature allows.
Six plants or two plants.
Yeah.
That's not relevant here, though.
But not.
Right, okay. Um, that's one point. And I, I was curious, the forum that was held last Tuesday night on the IC night, how, how many people came?
Less than 10.
Right. And I, I just want to point out, the roads may be fine, but it's, I was on another conversation with a book group at the library that I have lunches sometimes, and, you know, people kept saying, yeah, but my driveway is a sheet of ice. My driveway is a sheet of ice. And we don't have the town coming around and standing, standing, assaulting all of our driveways.
Neither are we recommending.
Right. We just want people to get out. So, right. We don't want that.
As much as I love towns, ladies and trucks.
Luckily, it's recorded, it's televised, it's available. If you can't get it directly on the Cable Access Channel, you can go to thegrotonchannel.org, is it?
Yep, it's on the town's homepage.
On the town webpage.
It's on the town's webpage. If you want to see the forum where the presentation was done, and the Q and A that ensued thereafter, please do so.
And you remind me, I'm gonna sneak in here with something I should have done as an announcement and had intended to at the beginning of the meeting, that there is, uh, the, the presentation that Steve Kornacki did last week when he came back to Groton, a, I, I want to say, almost a celebrity, a, a television news broadcaster who grew up in Groton, went through our public schools, came back and spoke last week for the Historical Society, and it was a fascinating speech with a question and answer period, and it was filmed, and it is available to be watched on a Vimeo recording. And I don't know exactly where you would find it, but maybe I can...
Go on the Vimeo and do a search for his last name.
Right. Kornacki, K-O-R-N-A-C-K-I.
Mr. Chairman, minutes, subcommittee meeting, to set the town manager's goals in January. Do you and Barry need to vote that?
Well, before we go to that, we have liaison reports.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any...
They're not on the agenda.
So, uh, I stayed later on Saturday after the joint meeting to liaise with the, the Finance Committee. Um, and, uh, the one item that came up actually dovetails into a discussion point that, uh, kind of surfaced with Ms. Pine, which was, um, resurrecting some form of the Municipal Building Review Subcommittee. Um, and so I'm just putting it out there that once the Finance Chair and I have an opportunity to discuss that at length, I'll put that forth on it as an agenda item, uh, as part of my liaison duties.
So for maintenance purposes, or use purpose?
I don't want to get into too much, you know, because we haven't fleshed it out.
Right.
This is very cursory, so pardon the lack of, uh, normal development that I would give on something like this. But it would be, um, a set of citizens who would make a report every year on, here are all the buildings we have in town, and here's what we think about each of those buildings, and maybe, and then that gets into the makeup of how you, how would they know once they're, they make up the committee. So there's lots of little details that I would say, if that's the goal, what's the requirements to drive up to that goal? Um, and that's why I want to sit down with the Chair of the FENCOM as, as his, his guidance and idea. Because the idea was, well, we're kind of surprised by some things that come up that we need now. Uh, you know, we may have known, we have this committee, so they might have gone out and investigated the highway department and told us three years ago, hey, you've got to fix that highway department, because there's citizens who say, this is important, these people need different things, instead of Tommy having, having to decide, oh my God, I got to get this, and I need to bring it forward. And so it's, it's, and then you've got citizenship involved, and maybe just one of your keys has a little bit more transparency angle to it. So I think it's a good idea, and I think it dovetails, and it assists, and enables the town manager to do his job even more effectively on Trump's behalf.
Very good. Thank you. Any other reports from anyone? Becky, you attended an Eagle Scout ceremony yesterday?
I attended an Eagle Scout ceremony yesterday for Andrew Wilson, and I delivered and read the town proclamation, and we declared as a town that yesterday was Andrew Wilson Day. He did a project at Baby Beach that addressed both an environmental problem and a safety issue with a steep slope, the only access to get to the lake if there's an emergency problem, the police or fire need to get there, get to the water to do any kind of, um, you know, crisis dealing. And, uh, it was also eroding down the slope. And as we heard from our committee, that means pouring nutrients into the lake, which we want everyone to learn not to let nutrients pour into water bodies. Um, so we did, by all accounts, a very excellent job.
Very good. We're very lucky to have such a high amount of Eagle Scouts that come out of the town of Groton. So congratulations to Andrew, and, uh...
And, and he involved a number of other groups in town in getting that work done, which I think is really a, uh, excellent aspect of the whole Eagle process, that they involve a lot of people.
True enough. Uh, we have two sets of minutes. One from, actually, you have something else?
No, no, no.
Two sets of minutes from January 8th, 2018 meetings. Uh, one of them was a subcommittee that consists of Barry and myself, um, along with the town manager, to set the town manager's goals, and we have minutes from that.
Yeah, I moved that we approve the minutes from our subcommittee meeting, January 8th, for the Board of Selectmen, uh, town area goals and objectives.
I'll second that.
More discussion.
It's you and me. All in favor?
Oh, peace, aye.
Deacon, aye.
All right.
I have a question. When, uh, are the town manager's goals going to be shared with the rest of us?
We voted on them.
They've already been approved.
They've already been approved.
So why?
We have approved the meeting.
There have been a minute.
These are the minutes in the subcommittee, which we met with Mark in order to establish the goals, which we brought forward to the remainder of the board for approval.
Very recently, apparently.
Yes, last week, I think.
Oh, quickly. My mind.
And the second set of minutes, I'm trying to, February, January, right meeting with the Finance Committee where Mark made his initial budget presentation and some other items.
I moved that we approve the meeting minutes of Monday, January 8th, starting at 7:00 PM, jointly with the FENCOM.
Second. I'll second.
And this is a roll call vote.
Minogue, aye.
Peace, aye.
Peace, aye.
Pine, aye.
Deacon, aye. That is unanimous. And, uh, without any further, oh, but wait.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to let you know that the Finance Committee is going to make one very small scrutiny change on the very end of, there are two, well, one that I remember. Um, I think it was on the last page where, um...
We already fixed that.
Finance Committee was, was mentioned.
Should say Finance.
Finance.
It's fixed on, on the list.
And it's just a, it's just a...
Yeah, I didn't see, I looked for those errors that I heard from your meeting here, and I didn't find them here.
So they were already updated on your...
We updated them on those.
Thank you, okay.
And I thought they were very, very good.
That was your first, that was your first set of minutes. That was your first set of minutes. No, Dawn, you're not going to get out of taking one.
Yeah, so at any rate, uh, we are now adjourned. Good evening.
You're late, everybody.
Mark, thank you.
What do you think?